Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock on Tuesday, December 7th, so I will call today's committee the whole meeting to order. And the first item of business is to go through roll call. So Mallory, if you'll do that for us.
Sure. Counselor Clark?
Present.
Counselor Donaldson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
Counselor McKechnie?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Wood Roberts?
Present.
And Mayor Roberts?
Present.
Perfect.
Okay, the next item, I'm going to look for someone to move to adopt the agenda, please. Counselor Wood Roberts and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Do you it resolved that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting held on December 7th, 2021 be approved as presented? All in favor? And that's carried. And next, I'll ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof. Seeing none, we'll move along to the adoption of the minutes from the committee, the whole meeting of November 9th. If I could have mover, a second or Counselor Smith and Counselor McKechnie. Do you it resolved? That the November 9th, 2021 committee, the whole minutes be approved as circulated? All in favor? Carried. And we do have a delegation today at nine o'clock, but Detachment Commander Dan Collings has not called in yet, so the nature of his business could be that he's been called away. So we will hold his spot, and if he's able to connect throughout the meeting, I'll be informed by Danielle here, and then we'll move to that. So for now, we'll just put that on hold. And we'll move into the main reports from, so we'll start with our report from the fire department. We'll bring in our fire chief. He's coming. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to you.
So two or three reports this morning. First one is a standard report, just to update on the call volume and and some of the day-to-day business. I think it's straightforward. The second one is a, just a report from the Emergency Management Control Group. As everybody's aware, we have removed the declaration of emergency. We still will continue to meet if there's warranted. Just a lot of our authorities are gone, so that flips things back to council to make any decisions that may be available. And a quick summary, quite surprising to see that we had over 60 meetings. Obviously, a lot of time. Great group and great committee to work with, great input from everybody, and it was very much appreciated. So thank you.
So Mike, maybe I'll just stop you there to see, because I do have two separate resolutions, one on the right, on the regular monthly report, and then also on the emergency report. So I just want to say, certainly when I put my name on the ballot, like a lot of mayors across Ontario, and especially in small towns, we don't have that experience to go through being in a state of emergency and being in the pandemic that we were. You know, I have to say, I'm really so proud and appreciate all the hard work of the department heads and the people that are on that control group. And Deputy Mayor Kennedy was included in that with his experience with being the EMS chief. And while I hope we never have to go through that type of experience again, we are certainly in good hands at DICER with the staff, and we were a great team and worked together. We always made decisions on consensus and were able to bounce ideas off each other and come to the best, you know, resolutions and best decisions that we could for DICER. We didn't, we sometimes looked to see what other people were doing, but we always did what was best for us. So thanks to Mike for leading us along that path, and again, to all the staff. We just want to see if there's any questions on either of those, and I'll look for resolutions on the, any questions or comments to Mike? Okay, so what I'll do is I'll look for a resolution first for the receipt of the regular monthly report, if I could. So that's Counselor Clark and Counselor Donaldson. Do you it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges received the fire department report for November 2021? All in favor? Okay, that carries. And then secondly, to receive the report in the Emergency Control Group, mover and a second or Counselor Smith and Counselor Clark. Do you it resolve that the committee of the whole acknowledges received the Emergency Control Group update? All in favor? Okay, and that carries as well. And so next, let's talk about the Emergency Management Program and our response, the bylaw, my plan, sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
So for the first time in several years, I guess, since the pandemic, the field officer was in. When they do their review, there's a lot of paperwork. This year, she honed in on the bylaws. I had certainly caught it in the plan when we wrote it in 2018, and I had removed any reference to designates. But apparently, obviously, it was still in the bylaw, so it's just a very simple change to the bylaw to remove any reference of designates and everything else has stayed the same. There has been no revision, revisions or change to the plan in any way.
Okay, any comments from anyone? It's just so the bylaw reflects the plan. Okay, so mover and a second on that, Counselor Smith? And Counselor Wood Roberts? Oh, Counselor Smith, you want to speak to this?
Well, I just had a question, if I might, for clarification. In the, in the bylaw, section number six appoints the fire chief as the Community Emergency Management Coordinator. And, and then in sections eight and 11, it lists the, you know, the members, first and eighth of the Emergency Management Program Committee. It includes the Community Emergency Management Coordinator, and it also includes the fire chief. Given that number six has appointed the fire chief as the CMC, what's the rationale for listing also the fire chief in that section? And the same concept applies to point 11 in terms of the Emergency Control Group. I mean, the fire chief and the CMC are both the same person. So why list them both?
Meant to be a general document was general figurehead, so that if CMC changed, then you wouldn't have to go through and rework the document. That's, that's why the designates were were removed. Our original plan actually put names to people and this document is meant to be on a more of a general scale, so it's meant to be universal and and doesn't have to be changed every time there's a position changed, was the intent.
But the document would have to be changed. I mean, council in this bylaw appoints the fire chief as the CEMC. If we're going to appoint somebody else to that role, then we'd have to change the document. And that's what I find troubling about both of those positions, therefore being listed in eight and 11. But.
Is it more of a redundancy, just because it's listed twice, like it's one in the same, but it means the same thing? I don't know, Mallory or Tamar, if you want to comment on either of that, when you used to reading bylaws and.
Well, no, Mike's right. The CEMC and the fire chief are two different positions, and depending on who's in place, we'll change that. And I think he's answered the question related to why the bylaws written as it is.
Okay. So I did actually have Counselor Smith as the mover and Counselor Wood Roberts as the second or. So I will read the resolution then. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole accepts the draft amendments to the bylaw to adopt an Emergency Management Program and Emergency Response Plan as written, and further recommends that the bylaw be brought to the December 21st, 2021 council meeting for approval. All in favor? Okay, that carries. Before you leave, Mike, I just want to thank also the fire department for their participation in the Santa Claus parade. Did a great job, lots of fancy equipment and sirens are rolling, and that was, that was great. Thank you for that. And then just one last thing is on the declaration that the, our emergency is over. I suspect that we will do a sort of debrief sometime in the new year, get the control group together and just do a little bit of a wrap up. And maybe just say, you know, what do we do right, what do we do wrong, what can we do better, and that type of thing, and just have a, if you want to get the control group together, just to have, just to a debrief, if you will.
Oh, yeah. Any emergency should end with a debrief, so we'll put that off to the new year when we have more time.
Or when COVID isn't still so.
Yeah. Or when the, when the emergency is over, maybe, a few years from now.
Which it isn't. Yeah. Okay, thanks so much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we're going to do the Public Works Department, and our Director of Public Works is away on training. So he's not with us, but we do have reports, and we do have, obviously, John Watson is being brought in for the two at the end. So, but the first report is just the sale of surplus equipment. So that's fairly standard, unless there's any questions on that. Anybody want to ask? We just need a mover and a second or two to receive and acknowledge the report. For selling the equipment, oh, Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Clark. Do you it resolve that the committee receives and acknowledges this report regarding the sale of unit 32091, being a 2010 International 7600 with snowplow equipment as information? All in favor? Okay, so that's carried. Excuse me. And then the award of a tandem axle truck with snowplow equipment. Again, I'll just look up, see if there's any questions on that. This is for way in the future. Okay, so I will look for a mover and a second or Counselor Smith and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Do you it resolve that the committee receive and acknowledge this report regarding RFT 2021 PW-19 as information, and that the committee recommend council award the RFT 2021 PW-19 being a tender for the supply of one tandem axle truck complete with snowplow equipment to be delivered in calendar year 2023 to Winslow Geralomy Motors Limited for a price of $295,143 excluding HST, and that the expense be included in the 2023 budget and drawn from the Development Reserve. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. So the next two items, the carton council, we've got John Watson to speak to that.
Good morning. The first report is about the Carton Council of Canada, which has recognized DICER with a $2,000 community education grant award for its efforts to promote carton recycling. Cartons are defined as shelf-stable or septic cartons or refrigerated gable top cartons, and here in DICER, they're accepted in our recycling for containers. We were one of 16 Ontario organizations or municipalities to receive this award, which recognized us for our efforts to use social media, website, promotional materials to help inform residents about the proper recycling of these items.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
I think social media is, this is a great example of a good use for social media to get that message out. I have to say on a personal note, I have to remind certain people in the household that those need to be rinsed out, and I crush mine. So do, and what about the plastic little lid?
The lid can stay on, so if you've got an orange juice carton, for example, once you've rinsed it out, put the orange, the cart, the lid back on the cart. That's fine.
So that might be a message as we go forward, and I can show it to certain people. I'm not going to say names or anything, but if they rinse them out. Okay, any questions, comments to John on that award? Great, great job. Okay, mover, second or please? Counselor Clark and Counselor McKechnie? Do you it resolve that the committee of the whole receives this report for information about the Carton Council Canada's Community Education Grant Award? All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. And the electronic waste recycling collection issue.
Yeah, I just wanted to give everyone an update about the triple E program. So back in September of 2020, a new regulation 52220, electrical and electronic equipment was passed, and it came into effect on January 1st of 2021. As part of this program, DICER does not pay for any portion of this recycling program of electronic waste, whether it be bin rental, transportation, processing. And we do receive a financial incentive for the designated materials that we collect. Last December, DICER council approved an agreement with COM2 Recycling Solutions that provided collection at Halliburton, Harcourt, Kinesis Lake, and West Guilford landfills. In September of this year, COM2 Recycling elected to cease collection of the designated materials at Harcourt, Kinesis Lake, and West Guilford, and only provide collection at Halliburton landfill. COM2's rationale is that it was too expensive for them to finance the bin rental and transportation at DICER landfills with low or no tonnages, and partially because the regulation specifically says that if the population is 500,000 or less, at least one e-waste collection site for every 15,000 people is required. So DICER size only needs one e-waste drop-off location as per the regulation. We did explore other e-waste collection, collection organizations or vendors. The aim was to reinstate collection at all of our previously served sites. We actually had made a recommendation to proceed with entering into agreement with a, with a new vendor, but that vendor actually withdrew their offer before it could be executed, because again, they identified costs of servicing additional sites that they felt were prohibitive. Additionally, some of the environmental compliance approvals for our sites specifically state that e-waste must be stored and covered in a storage container, which prevents the use of super sacks, which some of the other vendors have talked about, which super sack is like a big bag that gets lifted up. Under provincial regulation, DICER staff are not able to transport the e-waste from one site to another, so we aren't able to do that. This is becoming an issue across the province. There's been municipalities and other parts of the province that are experiencing the same issue with vendors ceasing to collect e-waste from multiple municipal sites. And just recently, at the end of November, the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks announced proposed amendments to this regulation. So consultation is starting and will end on January 10th of 2022, and DICER staff will be taking part in a webinar about the amendment, proposed amendment changes later this month. Some of the challenges identified are specifically this read, this kind of issue that we are encountering where vendors are not necessarily servicing all the sites they had in the past under the previous regulations. So again, e-waste is accepted at the Halliburton landfill, and hopefully going forward, we'll be able to reinstate that service at other landfill sites, but at the moment, just Halliburton only.
Okay, thank you for that, John, and I'm really pleased to hear that you're participating in that conversation, and you can express our concerns with that, because it shouldn't just be based on population, it should be a distance factor related in there as well. And it could be something as simple as just pick up twice a year, or pick up when we call you, like Counselor Donaldson, I do see your hand, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, but you know, you'll know how often, how much e-waste, or maybe we have those stats of how much e-waste is there. It's different if someone drops off a cellphone and some small items, but then they drop off a old 50-inch TV, and it sits there. So anyway, I think there's solutions, and I think they're whether, you know, they pick up as needed or less often. So I will look to Deputy Mayor Kennedy for comment first.
Thanks, and thanks, John, for that excellent report. It's probably, you won't be able to answer this one. What might be involved in DICER being able to get the proper license to be able to move e-waste from our remote landfills back in, or is there a possibility of that? You say by regulation, we can't, but obviously, there must be some other regulation that here's the parameters involved in getting a permit or a license for that. Just, if you looked into that.
We could definitely explore that option. It would, it basically means we are operating as a waste hauler, so the, the truck has to have an ECA specifically for that task. So there is a financial cost, obviously, an operational cost, some training as well to be designated to be one of those type of operators. So something we can explore, if that's something council wanted us to look at.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thanks, John. And just following up on that, then. So that's the environmental compliance approval. That's restricting, is that correct?
Pardon?
It's the ECA, the environmental compliance approval is restricting in that regard?
In terms of hauling materials, it's regulations around being a waste hauler. Right, we, DICER staff are not designated, or our equipment is not designated to be a waste hauler. As soon as, as soon as dropped off at a site, it becomes the site's waste, and if municipal staff pick it up, then we are operating as a hauler, not as a resident. So that becomes the challenge of us, of us moving waste from one site to the other.
But you mentioned if we're going to, you'll have a, a soft sack container, for example. That was our ECA?
Yeah, so the ECAs on some of the site won't allow the super sack to be used. Besides the operational issues of how you get a super sack lifted up, that's a whole other discussion, but some of our ECAs don't, would not permit a super sack to be used at our sites.
Okay. What's, what would be involved in getting an ECA updated? So whether it's for this with the super sack, as you call it, whether it's some of the other, you know, devices that people like to drop off, UV lights, fluorescent lights. There's a variety of things that are organic waste. You know, things that are restricted today, that we're not allowed to accept at our landfills. And, and those restrictions are as a result of the ECA. What would be involved in submitting a request even for a single landfill to update that ECA and make it, you know, more responsive, if you like, to the needs of the community?
Yeah, it's partially a financial situation, so you'd obviously have to spend money to make the ECA amendment, and then you are basically at the whims of the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, but whether they agree with the amendments to the ECA. It is a bit of a roll of the dice. You honestly never know what the, what the ministry is going to ultimately agree to. We, in some of our ECAs, we've tried to be a bit more open-ended about what we can accept. And in that regard, the ministry has actually come back at points and have said, well, it doesn't specifically say you can do this, which means you cannot do this. So it is kind of, you have the inspectors versus the compliance branch, which issues these ECAs, and they don't always work in tandem. So it is, it is a time thing, a financial thing, and there's no guarantee you will get the amendments that you request. But it is something, again, that we can look at, especially since all five of our sites have slightly different ECAs. It makes it challenging for consistency between the sites when they do, when they are different.
Thank you, John. Counselor Donaldson? Counselor Donaldson has the floor. Counselor Smith, Counselor Donaldson had her hand up. You can ask a further question after.
Thanks. Just a question for John. Is it possible that a contractor could be contracted to pick up the e-waste from the landfill sites?
Um, I mean, in theory, it's possible. It's a financial cost for a program that isn't supposed to cost us anything. The e-waste program is not supposed to be funded by the taxpayer, it's supposed to be funded by the producers of that electronic waste, which is how it currently is. So again, anything is possible in that regard.
So then it would also be possible, then, if DICER owned a container, that they could just keep it at each landfill site that doesn't have one, and just move it to Halliburton when the e-waste gets picked up?
Again, there's a cost, a cost for the municipality to do that with bins that we don't have. And with the collection vehicle we don't have, and there's no guarantee the processor will take material from multiple bins. There's there's a bit of stuff that would need to be worked out in that kind of situation.
Okay. You know, I think, I see you, Counselor Clark. I think after the, was it just a webinar that you spoke to, and then that's in the new year, you believe?
The webinar is on the 15th of December, and the amendments are going to be finalized in January.
So perhaps that your next committee, the whole report, we don't meet as a committee of the whole in January, but you can report on that in February as to what you feel the outcomes or you, or, or conversation was. At this point, like John said, it's supposed to not cost us anything, so to then become, pay an independent company to be the hauler, that's not the solution. I don't believe. And opening an ECA is also got a lot of costs involved, so I think we'll wait to hear more from that report. But Counselor Clark, and then Counselor Smith. Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just reinforcing what you just mentioned about John saying, there's additional information coming, so, you know, for us to be talking or spending a lot of time on this is just waste. And this is not a huge item, you know, how, you know, as homeowners, once or twice a year, we may have something that goes into electronic bin. We wanted these in all of our sites. I'm sure any of the electronic companies, if we paid them a price, would do it, but we don't want to be getting into that. This is not a, this is not a huge issue. So I think we're making more of this than needs to be done. I think, you know, let's wait and see what John comes back with on, in January, and then determine that if we've got enough volume to make it worthwhile adding on this extra work for all the staff and the different sites, and then we'll figure it from there.
Good, good point, Counselor Clark. Counselor Smith, and then Counselor McKechnie.
Yeah, thank you. Just, you know, I'd like, if we could get a sense from John, could he report? It says there's a cost in applying or updating an ECA. Could you give us a sense of the, of the degree of cost? This isn't just related to electronic waste. You know, we've had different groups come to us and talk about organic waste, and the fact that we don't have that as a separate stream in our waste. There's other devices, you know, fluorescent tubes, UV lights, you know, many facilities in particular have UV systems to purify the water, whether it comes from a well or the lake. These are all things that our ECA are placing restrictions on right now. And, and so, you know, I'd like to get an update in terms of precisely what would be involved in the way of of cost and effort to seek an update to these ECAs.
Hey, we're off, we're off topic, Mallory. Is that what you were gonna, I'm not paying attention?
Oh, no, no, I was, I was just gonna, I was gonna say, I think, and I want John to confirm, John Watson, that as part of our waste strategy, that our consultants are updating our ECAs to make sure they're more universal across the board. Is that true, John?
It is. We are working on amending and updating ECAs as, as kind of the time is right. The, the trick is with amending an ECA, you can amend the ECA, which costs X dollars, but then you need to have the operational cost to run a program. So if we want to collect UV bulbs, besides amending the ECA, we need to have the staff in place to be able to monitor that, the capital for a building, like there's, it's more than just simply amending the ECA, we can take anything. We need to have the infrastructure in place to manage that material, whether it be electronics, hazardous waste, or organics. There are other costs to be, that would be incurred to manage any of those additional items.
Okay, and Counselor McKechnie, and then I think we'll wrap up the conversation here.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Clark and a lot of what he had to say there. Well, I don't understand, John, Mr. Watson is, so if it's you or whoever drives over to Harcourt in your truck, and there's some small things there, you couldn't throw them in the back of the truck? I mean, where are we going with this? Are we gonna have to hire another department? Another special trucks and gloves and get those space suits and, I mean, how the heck did our forefathers ever survive up here? With, I mean, to me, we're just creating another monster that's going to grow more heads. I drive, I've worked for, I, the landfill sites. Mr. Watson sends me over to Harcourt, the guy says, hey, there's a bunch of boxes here, that I, we couldn't just throw them in the back of the truck?
No, but let's not blame John Watson.
No, I'm not blaming him.
Though I know.
I, I don't, where are we going with this?
Some things don't always make sense, but on a grander, we're thinking of. Some things don't always make sense, but on a grander sk- we're thinking of.
It's another monster that's gonna grow heads.
It's in, in, in larger, you know, provincial governments make rules for uh, the G T A and the golden horseshoe, and I know we're just small potatoes up here. But I do think that there's probably a solution, uh, I, and, uh, so we'll, we'll wait till John has had that webinar and, um.
I agree, I'm not gonna pick up the large TV, but I could pick up a box, put it in the truck, take it over.
Yeah, well, for now, the residents of Harcourt are gonna have to drive over to Halliburton. Okay, uh, I will like, uh, look for a mover second or please to receive this report, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor Clark. Be resolved that the community, the whole received the report for information about electronic waste recycling, collection and processing. All in favor? Carried? Thank you, John. Next, we'll move into the Parks Department and Andrea Mueller's gonna be joining us. Okay, good morning, Andrea.
Morning, how are you?
Morning. Hi, okay, so your first report is about the Welcome Center.
It is, and I noticed, I'm not sure if everyone else, the PowerPoint, when I pulled up the PDF, um, for the, that's attached to the report, is not pulling up properly on my computer. So I don't know if that's a case for everyone or if it's just on my computer.
Uh, I can see it, and I think we can all see it, uh, just what a little uh, formatting thing on the, um, on the statistics, uh, I think it's the last slide of the slide deck where the words July and August, September, that, that they don't fit in the box, other than that, so.
That's good, because on mine, there's a whole bunch of words missing and everything, so I just wanted to make sure, so.
And I've been hoping to share a screen.
Would you like me to? Is that better or?
I, I mean, for the public, it is part of the public agenda. They just have to click the blue link and look at it after. So unless council wants or to, uh, Mallory, do you think we need to share that?
No, it's up to you guys. I think it's okay.
So it's, it's on, yeah, it's on the agenda, but, uh, so I'll just let you, let you speak to the report and then we'll, uh, go from there and ask questions.
Sure, so I figured, um, seeing that we've been open since July thirteenth, it would be a good time to just give a, a bit of a year in review. And maybe every year, uh, to give some stats about the Welcome Center. Um, I do have to give, uh, some credit to some of our staff, Gail Clements, who's one of our casual staff. She put together the charts. It was something she decided to do one day when it was a bit slower. She took all the stats, and so this is going to become an ongoing task for her, uh, each month to put together some stats for us. Um, all the staff have helped to compile information. We asked them to keep track of comments of different, of, of reoccurring questions, of, um, a whole bunch of things. So this is just a, a brief synopsis of what we have going on. So as I mentioned, sorry, I'm just looking at my slides, we opened on June thir- officially opened the doors to the public on July thirteenth. Um, the center itself, the washrooms and everything were open earlier, but, um, the actual interior space was open on July thirteenth, which is when a lot of the data started being collected. Um, in the summer, there were five casual staff and one full-time staff, which is Alyssa. Um, at the moment, we have three casual staff and a full-time staff working at the Welcome Center. And some of the casual staff are hoping, the ones that were, worked for us last, last summer, are hoping to return again this summer. Um, really happy with our staff. We have, we've had fantastic comments about all of them, and they're all eager and willing to work. And, you know, if somebody can't make it for some reason, somebody else is willing to jump in, so I'm, I'm really happy with that. Uh, one thing that we really noticed a lot this year during the nicer weather were the number of people that came into the park to use the picnic tables and the, the benches in front of the Welcome Center to do work. Um, some people drove in from their cottages. They were vacationing in the area. Other people just didn't have good internet at home. It was quite a variety of people. Um, some people would bring their kids with them, and the kids would play in the playground while they, they conducted business meetings and everything. So we definitely saw that was a, a large part of use this summer. Um, we had many, we've had people come in and, you know, it says, if there's a problem with the washrooms, please let us know. And people have come in and they're like, there's no problem. We just want to let you know they're the best washrooms we've ever seen. We did remind them they're brand new, but our hope is that we can keep them in this state for years to come, so that way we get, we continue to get those compliments. Um, one thing, though, that we have noticed in the fall, um, is that some of the washrooms are being misused. Uh, people are going in, they're smoking in them, there's been some drug use in them, the O P P have been notified. Um, we have actually started locking the accessible washroom on the outside, just because it was creating a hangout space. And you'd get a couple of people going in at the same time, so we're hoping that that kind of behavior is deterred. Um, especially now, because they have to come inside to use an accessible washroom. It's not great for the general public, but we're just trying to manage that issue. So as you can, the, the next slide shows about the busiest days. The busiest days are definitely the days that the farmer's market is in town. Um, the farmer's market shared their stats with us, um, and these are just the general stats. So you can see that eleven thousand seven hundred people attended the farmer's market between July thirteenth and September twenty eighth. Tuesdays were certainly very busy. Uh, staff would open up additional washrooms just to accommodate that, but they had a lot more traffic inside too, for people looking for information and everything. Um, one of the most common, actually the most common question asked at our Welcome Center is hiking and, and walking trails. So that one, uh, people are constantly asking about those. Um, we did create a new map or an updated map for the downtown core and the Headlake Trail. Um, but we try to have lots of information handy. We, we have brochures about local trails and everything, so that's a big one. Accommodations, looking for day of, the, uh, so our staff, at the beginning of the season, contacted all the different accommodators and asked who accepts day of bookings and everything, so that, just to be helpful and to be ready. Um, real estate information for a whole variety of reasons, interested in buying houses, cottages, uh, land in the area. And then the Ontario and county roadmaps. Now, the unfortunate thing is the Ontario roadmaps, they haven't created a new one since twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We still have a few that we have and we're very carefully handing those out. But, uh, I've heard that they're not making them again. Uh, we've also heard that if they do make them, there's going to be a fee associated with them, so we'll see. But the county maps too, go out very quickly. And obviously, like, given that there were a lot of travel restrictions and people weren't freely traveling, we still had people from afar come into the Welcome Center. You can see China, Germany, um, places in the States. We are, and the different provinces across Canada, so a lot of Ontario, a lot of local travelers are, are people staying close to home, but people from afar as well. And then if you look at the, uh, I think it's the final slide, you can see, obviously, the summer months leading up to the October are busier. November was very quiet, which we anticipated. Um, as the snow starts to come and we get into snowmobiling, we expect to see the numbers climb again. So it'll be interesting to see what those numbers look like next year. Um, but so far, this is going up to the end of November. Uh, there were three thousand five hundred and two visitors that actually came into the Welcome Center. So this doesn't include the washroom use on the outside of the building. It's just the people that actually physically came through the doors. And there's, there's a lot more people that use the washrooms that don't come in. They're just using the washrooms, so. Anyone has questions, yes?
I'll open it up for questions to Andrea on this. Anybody? Uh, Counselor Smith and then Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Uh, thanks, Andrea. I really appreciate the, uh, the information and the insights that were provided by this report. Um, we've talked a little bit about this once before, uh, and, and the question, uh, that you frequently hear about is the washrooms don't open very early in the morning. And, um, and so, uh, have you looked at or are you considering finding a way to get them open, uh, even at nine o'clock?
Um, at the moment, no. Our park staff have a hard time, necessarily, they don't necessarily get there until later to clean them. So some days they're not cleaning them till nine forty-five in the morning, and they're the ones that do the mopping, like a thorough, um, cleanse of the floors and mopping of the floors, so, um, no, and, and the reality is, they haven't been used. Like, our staff, sorry, I'm hearing an echo. Um, our staff don't use the washroom, or sorry, our staff are there, but there's not too many people coming trying to use the washrooms or get in prior. There might be one or two, but it's not, it's not a, a large number of people. So, um, there is, there are still the washrooms over by the playground.
The ones that we didn't consider a good enough recruitment ago, right?
Counselor Smith?
Pardon me?
Yeah, we didn't not consider them, they were pit toilets, and the great part about that is we don't need to take them out. They were overused in the middle of July on a thirty-degree day, when you have the number of people that we have in Headlake Park and in town. It's really nice to have the alternative of a proper flush toilet with water. But in a pinch, at nine A M. or at eleven P M. or at any other time, there, those other toilets are great to have there. So, we've just.
Just, just providing feedback that's been shared with me, uh, or that, uh, people would like to see the washrooms open prior to ten o'clock.
So it's a cleaning, it's a, a cleaning issue and the parks, uh, staff do the deep clean. Our, our Welcome Center staff do the hourly or whatever it is, check. But that's different, uh, that's making sure that, you know, in the deep clean. Uh, sorry, who is next? Deputy Mayor Kennedy and then Counselor Clark.
Yeah, um, Andrea, I just wanted to pass along, uh, congratulations to you and your staff and the volunteers, the part-time people that work there. I've heard nothing but fabulous things about our new Welcome Center, and it's certainly an asset to our community. So, uh, no complaints there, uh, just a great job, and hopefully the snowmobilers are gonna be happy this winter as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. We, we put some special mats there for the snowmobilers too, so when they come in, hopefully they don't, they're to, to absorb some of the moisture and stuff walking into the washroom, so hopefully no one slips with the snow.
Yeah, okay, Counselor Clark.
Yeah, yeah, just to reiterate what, um, Deputy Mayor Kennedy just said, um, you know, having proper washrooms is, is key for us getting good use and, and high quality, um, you know, programs and events in Headlake Park. Uh, I've seen this in a number of communities where if you don't have decent public washrooms, you're not going anywhere, or you've got some real challenges. Um, we adhere nothing but complaints if it was just the old vote host type of thing that we're intending to use. Um, but my question to you, Andrea, is, is, uh, I think there's a number of, of different groups that are, are planning or, or hoping to do some events next year. And I think what, um, we're trying to do is, is figure out what kind of a, a tariff or whatever we want to put on, because traditionally they've, they've had to rent the porta potties. Um, and, and there is opportunity for us to, well, for one thing, we're after, there's bigger service costs for the township when, when a, a big event is going on, and the amount of cleaning and all that type of thing always with it. Um, but I think we're trying to come up with a time, a timeframe for when that information may be available as to, you know, if the event's a hundred people, then we're gonna do this, you know, add this amount on their, on their, um, license or whatever it is we're, we're providing. Uh, any, any idea of a timeframe when you may have that information available?
Yep, so it was, um, there was a report of, in October regarding that, or sorry, we're in December now, November. Uh, there was a report that I did regarding that, and it will come back to council in February for the Committee of the Whole and then for hopefully approval at the February council meeting. So anyone who's looking for events has received like a tentative confirmation, knowing that there will be other fees associated and changes to the park use agreement that they'll have to fill out, hopefully in March or maybe April, but before, well before their event takes place.
Okay, thank you, Andrea, and, and thanks to all the staff that work there. Um, I know someone who's retired and enjoys her few days a week that she works there in the summertime and just, you know, we need people who are good ambassadors. It's the first impression, um, uh, often for a, a visitor, uh, to come. And, and I think the whole thing with COVID, there was already a move to do this hyper, uh, local tourism. So we can attract people from Peterborough to come all the way to Halliburton. They think it's that far. We could go there, because we have to go to the hospital or something. Uh, but if we can attract people to do these day trips and it's, we're not that far to, to come up, uh, I think it's great. We need to keep statistics and we can share them with the, um, county as well and when they're looking. And also just the point of the Ontario maps, if for some reason they do charge, obviously, um, that is something, we have the square technology there, so that we could, I guess the government would probably make us purchase a lump sum, but then we could sell them for the same price, just to, uh, offer that service. You know, Mr. Google can only get so far, then, you, it's really nice to have a paper map now and again, because Google can lead you down a Billy Goat path that isn't meant to be a road, so that's great. Okay, uh, I will look for mover second or to receive this report. And Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Clark. Be resolved that the community, the whole receives the Halliburton Welcome Center Year in Review Report for, as information. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried, and next, some questions regarding the, um, torque boat races, so I'll turn that back over to you. Oh, are we bringing somebody in? Oh, she's coming back. We lost Andrea. We're bringing her back. You're back.
I'm not sure what happened there.
It's okay.
Yeah, and I think for this report, I think there was a possibility that John Watson was on standby in case there were questions, because there's, there's things in here that speak to the, uh, environment, so, um, current Counselor Clark already brought up about proposed events and what, and things happening in Headlake Park, and we've definitely had people inquire. Um, this, this letter here was, uh, addressed to, to council, or sorry, the letter that's attached was addressed to council from the, uh, torque, um, powerboat racing series. Um, but in, in reading over the requests and then, uh, just knowing events are coming up and we haven't had really too many or not large scale for a few years, um, I thought it would be wise to, uh, to maybe talk to some of the, the requests that are in here, just so councils or committee of the whole is aware of what, um, the request may be and what could end up happening with other, other events. So, um, as I mentioned, the park use agreement will have an updated one with the fees for the washrooms in the spring. Um, and, and so we're just tentatively penciling in people for events. And with this letter here, uh, the weekend, August nineteenth to twenty second, um, that's traditionally the weekend that the powerboat racers have used Headlake Park. Obviously, there's been a bit of a hiatus for the past year and a half. Um, but, uh, as per our agreement, if they've been in, uh, an event has come to council, or sorry, an event has been held in our area in the past, they can book again, as long as there's no major, major changes, which there are no major changes to this event. Um, some of the requests that came forward though, which we as a Parks and Recreation Department have a few concerns with. Um, one, it has to do with closing the public docks. We don't, we're not concerned about closing the public docks. The concern is that we've always had to pay for the advertising in the newspapers and everything, saying that the docks will be closed to the public on that weekend. So it comes out of our budget, but we're saying this is a private event, and we're asking that the event organizer be responsible for paying for that advertisement. It saves us about three hundred dollars. Um, it's just something to consider. Um, again, the, what this one is, uh, one that's come again, over and over again too, is to put the posts in the ground that help to block off the, uh, the parking area from, so they have a hot pit area, which they put fence, they rent fencing from C R S and put it around in one area, and that's for all the, uh, the racers keep their boats and they stay in their trailers and so forth. But then there's more fencing put up along, parallel to, um, parallel to Highland Street and then going down from Highland, perpendicular from Highland Street to the docks. And that fencing, um, y- years ago, it was park staff who put it up, but it's becoming more and more cumbersome for them to do their, the park staff have been a lot busier these past two years. They've been busier than ever, even though there's no, not really not many events going on. So we're saying as a, as a group that it would, we feel that it should be the responsibility of the event organizer to put up the fencing and the posts. Um, and then the garbage removal, and this is why John Watson's on here, in the, in the park use agreement and with the new waste management policy, uh, there's a bylaw and event organizers are responsible for the removal of their own garbage. If they don't, they're charged a five hundred dollar fee. And in the letter, there is a request that we remove the garbage from this event, and the event organizer has said that, uh, the people coming to the event, you know, they don't have landfill passes or coming for the weekend, and they don't have the means to get it to the landfill. But again, this is something where we don't really have the staff or the, the staff availability to remove garbage. Um, if we do, there's a five hundred dollar fee, but I know in a conversation with the event organizer, they asked that we waive that fee. So, but it's just, this is only one event, and if every event were to request that, we can run into some problems. So this is just something for council to consider, um, provide staff with direction, maybe, on how, how we'd like to see things go. And there's, and John's there if you have questions too.
Okay, so, um, I see John and there are, so we'll sort of deal with the, the each question at a time. But Counselor Clark, do you wanna begin?
Yeah, it's, it's, what, what we've created, like I say, is, is, is a, a, a space for these major events to happen. And, and they've got to be looked at, I think, and, and perhaps maybe some of this is already in the, in the policies, Andrea. But if, uh, somebody's doing an event similar to what you see as Rotary, where, where the, the funds or the output from those events are coming back to benefit the community is one thing. If we have a group coming in, a private group who are making money, such as the powerboat group, um, not only is, is shutting down the docks and cutting off part of the park, uh, an imposition on the taxpayers of the community who've paid for the park, um, but for them to expect us to pick up their garbage for, it, it's totally ridiculous, you know, it's not. It's, it, you know, there's some benefit for some of the local community, for some of the local businesses. But there's got to be some kind of a dollar return for their community to, you know, to be experiencing. Um, uh, impositions on them being able to use community resources. So maybe, yeah.
Okay.
So if we can wrap that in.
Yep, yep, good point. And I, I don't think they make money, but as you say, they don't donate it back. I think it's a break even thing. The, the people pay entry fees and. They do what, whatever, but it's, uh, Andrea, did you want to speak to Counselor Clark's question?
So, um, just a bit of clarification there. They don't, I don't think they make money either. The money, the, the, the racers do pay. Uh, to participate and some of that money goes towards prizes for them or that there is a prize pot, but I, they also make a donation to the Halliburton Highlands Health Services Foundation. I don't know what the amount of that donation is, but I know that every year there is a donation made. Um, in years past, the municipality has given money to this organization to help with their event. Uh, that I don't see as part of the request this time around, but that's just some of the, the history from previous years. So.
Um, and maybe I'll just add on that before I open it up. I, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, you're next. It, so previously in, um, other councils will, will remember when this event first came. Um, there was a desire, first of all, with that DICE Art to bring some of more events to the park. And then next thing you know, we, we got all kinds. And we were doing financial contributions, um, through, um, a, a budget line, you know, for, for events. But with the understanding that it would be sort of for, you know, year one, two, and it, we, it trickled down. It was a one amount for the first year and so much. So we're. That isn't, as Andrea said, a request this year. Um, but we did do a financial contribution in the first couple of years to sort of kickstart it, if you will. So Deputy Mayor Kennedy, thoughts?
Yeah, uh, just, um, question one, if you want to do it that way, uh, closing the public docks. I, I see that there's a mention that in the past RPM has provided. Uh, free boat launches. I'd just like to see a confirmation letter from RPM of that practice would be in place for twenty twenty-two before we go forward. Um, I think that's important that, um, that tradition still continues and we just need confirmation of that. Thank you.
Okay, what is your thoughts on, um. Charging the event organizer, the three hundred dollars to cover the cost of advertising?
I think they should pay.
Okay, so is there a thought on, uh, Counselor Mc, or just with the show of hands, is there a thought that they should pay their own advertising to close our docks? We shouldn't come out of parks budget. Okay, so I think there's consensus on number one. That they should be paying the advertising to close the dock. We will confirm with, uh, with the event organizer if. Uh, RPM is letting them do that as well. Counselor McCackney, did you want to?
Yeah, in regard to, uh, the advertising, I was wondering if we, we could split it with them. Um, and, um, in regard to the, uh, fence, uh, how, how big a, how long a stretch of fence they have to put up and how many posts? Um. Does Andrea know that?
No. No, she's.
I don't know the number off the top of my head. No, it's, um. I'm not sure it changes from year to year, how many posts and how much fencing. We, we did the bare minimum in twenty nineteen. Um.
Yeah.
But again, there's not a hard cost on that, but it's staff time and it, it doesn't matter that we haven't had events. We know how much the demand. On our parks and not just Head Lake Park, all of the outlying parks. Uh, were used so, so much more in the last couple of years. I mean, we were doing garbage collection twice a day in Head Lake Park just to keep up. Um, and I don't see that. Just winding down. So I would also be in support for number two, which would be that they have to do their own fencing.
Oh, I'd, I'd like to see us, uh, you know, um, like they're going to come in there and, and maybe do it not the way that. That, that, uh, our parks and rec want it to be done. So if we could at least give them some direction. Um, uh, on, on what should happen there in regard to the fencing.
Yeah, I think they, they end up with a site plan basically, and it's going to be different this year because we have the welcome center there, which took a lot of parking spaces, actually. I can't remember in total how many, but. Um, their fencing will have to be the other side of the welcome center, which normally it was. Right there. Um, and so it'll have to be the, the other side of that so that the welcome center is open to the public.
In regard to the garbage, in the regard to the garbage pickup. Um, does farmers market, do they pay anything for all their garbage that's left behind every Tuesday? Or?
Andrea, do you want, John?
Yeah, so the farmer's market, uh, agreed to our special event collection policy. So they actually. Removed the recycling and garbage from the farmer's market themselves. And then brought it to, to the local landfill sites for disposal and recycling. So they were managing it completely themselves. We provided them bins though to, to help facilitate that.
So that's. Go ahead, Counselor McCackney.
So could we provide the bins for this, uh, weekend for those people also to do the same thing?
And I would suggest it. Okay.
Yeah, we, we have a series of bins that had, so you can sort your recycling and garbage separately with signage to help facilitate that.
And also you could do a temporary landfill card, one of the, but I believe the event organizer is a DICE Art resident. So. So she would have a, a landfill card, but if that was, if the landfill card is their issue. That could be sorted as well. Um, or we have a special landfill card for events that. So I certainly know when there we do roadside cleanup, uh. I, in my neighborhood, uh, on Kennegro 21, we're able to go into the landfill. Um, they let us into the landfill and say this is roadside cleanup because that garbage is contaminated sadly, like the recycling isn't, um. Isn't where it should be because we're picking up garbage on the side of the road. Um.
I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that this would work. But if the event organizer had, say on the Sunday that the event's over. If there was, if they had like, they are local, if there was a truck there and they took it to the Halliburton dump. Uh, hopefully we're not, they're not going to charge them because they got more than three bags.
We can make an exception for that, I'm sure. Um, I saw Deputy Mayor Kennedy and then Counselor Donaldson in that order. Yep. You're on mute, Deputy.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to follow up on Counselor McCackney. So I, I think that we probably need some supervision for where those stakes are going to be, the layout. I know we have a site plan, but. Be nice to have, uh, our staff supervise if not actually put them in. And I really like the concept of. Uh, supplying the bins and waiving the, the five hundred dollar fee if that's possible. That would be. A good contribution to helping that program go ahead. The other questions I just had, I think will come up would be the, in February, probably the washroom cost per unit hours, that kind of thing, what we're going to do for them. And then I would really request additional signage to our Rotary Beach parking area, especially for that weekend. We need much more than just the one round circle to get there. I think we're going to need, uh, specific signage on alternate parking because that parking lot is full. All summer as it is without, uh, losing it, uh, for that whole weekend. So we need to find some alternate solutions either. At the arena parking lot or the Rotary Beach one.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't, uh, writing that down. The, the first couple of comments, you said something about the five hundred dollar garbage thing?
Yeah, just, I think if we've provided the bins and they take the garbage to the dump with a one, one day use, I think that would, uh. Solve that problem that we could be able to waive that five hundred dollar fee. Is that?
Well, then we wouldn't be charging it. We only charge it if we have to do it.
Okay, yeah.
So it wouldn't cost them anything. And I think that through staff, we could work out that somebody just said they would be over the three bag limit.
Yeah. And the next one was just the supervisory staff for the installation of those stakes and the fencing. That was all. Not actually have to do it, but just have someone there to make sure that it's not going to damage any existing infrastructure that might be underneath the, the surface of the grass.
Okay, and great. Counselor Donaldson.
Yes, I was just, uh, just had the question, but I think it was answered. Um, because if they were in charge of the garbage, they technically wouldn't be able to put it at the landfill site without some kind of pass or something like that. Um, because they're not residents. So.
The event organizer is a resident. She, she says she's on Halliburton Lake. She, yeah, it's in the letter. It's okay. She, but maybe she doesn't want to use her personal landfill card. I, I don't know. I think the. The, I think we can sort out the logistics of it, but the fact is we're not collecting their garbage, which is what we've done in the past. Or if we do, it costs five hundred dollars. Mallory?
I was just going to say that I have a recommended revised resolution based on some of the recommendations in the report. Going to read it. And if we want to amend it, we can, but, um, so I have be resolved that the committee, the whole receives this report regarding event requests for council's information. And further, the committee who recommends a council direct staff to respond to the powerboat races organizers confirming. One, that the powerboat races organizers pay for the advertising for the closure of the public docks. Two, that they must install their own fencing for the event under the supervision of park staff. And three, that they must remove their event garbage as per our waste management policy and bylaw. So if there's anything we want to change, we can. But that starts it off with what staff are recommending in the report.
I, I will look to see if there's a mover and second to that, but I think you captured everything. And then verbally staff know that. That garbage collection means we can provide those bins that, that the, um, staff will, will. Can help with the site plan and maybe supervision of when the posts go up. Um, and also Deputy Mayor Kennedy referred to the, uh, better signage around town. I mean, some. Here at municipal office, sometimes this parking lot on a, on a Saturday and Sunday is wide open in the middle of the summer. And it's really only like a block to town, but people don't see it and know it. So, um, we do have a great big green pea on this side. But, uh, maybe who's, whoever is at the. That can be also related to, or relayed to the event organizers that, uh. You know, if they have somebody. At the mouth of the town dock area where it's closed off, they could verbally say. Help direct people. We don't want frustrated tourists or frustrated residents coming to town and going, ah, there's nowhere to park. They could say, oh, just go uptown, go along the street, turn right or da, 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 da. So maybe the event organizers could also help verbally with those people. With the alternate parking. So we heard the resolution amended. Counselor Smith, did you want to comment to that?
Um, just on the garbage, uh, I was looking to understand precisely here. So we're going to provide them containers. Uh, and then do we give them a pass that allows them to take the garbage to our, and into our landfill free of charge?
Well, I think we'll work that out with staff. Like I'd said a couple of times, the event organizer is a resident. If that's a problem and doesn't want to use her own personal. Pass, or if they're over the three bag limit, I think we can work around that. And, uh, I, I think staff can solve that problem fairly easily. But they will be required to recycle and are also a park use agreement. You can't sell bottle, bottled water because we have water in the park tops. Um, fountains. So, you know, they'll be required to, to follow our garbage policy or waste, sorry, waste. Management.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the, uh, the rationale for, for being so accommodating. Um, you know, if, uh, if someone is a, a local, uh, cottage owner. Uh, decides to rent their cottage out for, uh, a week or two during the summer. Uh, they're not allowed to lend out their landfill pass. They have to go as a, as a taxpayer of our community, they have to go in and buy a temporary landfill pass. For the person renting their cottage. And, um, and in this case, we've got an event coming to town. Uh, with a variety of people from out of town. And, um, and we're going out of our way to, uh, provide them containers and free access to our landfill. It doesn't seem that we're, um, you know, treating our, our property owners, the people who pay taxes, uh. Uh, here all the time as fairly as we're treating the, these, uh, these visitors. And, um, so I was just wondering what the rationale for, for bending over, uh, and making it so easy. Uh, for the, uh, event organizers here.
So I, I'm sorry, Counselor Smith, I'm going to ask you and then I'll open up to the floor. And then I think we've heard the resolution. What do you mean making it so easy? We're providing them with bins and they have to do the garbage collection and disposal themselves. How, why, how are we making that easy for them?
Well, we're giving them free access to, with their garbage to our landfill. Uh, whereas as I said, if somebody rents my cottage for a week. Um, they have to, you know, either I as the owner or the renter has to buy a, a landfill access pass.
Well. I think I've, I've been to the event and in her letter, she described, she's run this event for several years. This brings a lot of people to town for. The fact that they still have to take their garbage to the landfill. I do not see that that's a problem. What do they do? Take it? I don't understand. Anyway. Counselor McCackney?
The people who rent a cottage, uh, they'll provide a lot to our community too.
Cheap, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. When you rent your cottage and you get the five thousand bucks, go into municipal office and spend ten, buy another, buy another, uh, pass for your, the guys to take their garbage to the dump. These people drop a lot of money in town who come. They're also the event organizer and their committee. Write a pretty good sized check to the Halliburton Hospital, uh, Foundation. So, uh. I mean, like it, to, to me, they're, we're, we're, we're not doing anything that, that's, uh, going to offend. A, a majority of the taxpayers. People who are renting their cottages. They can't, for, they're getting three to five thousand bucks a week. You can't go, go into the municipal office and spend ten bucks or whatever it is to get another pass for those two, two or three day weeks that you rented out. So that's what I have to say on that, on your comments, Mr. Smith.
Okay, so we did hear a resolution read by Mallory. I could ask her to read it again, but I think, uh, I certainly can recall it. If someone wants to move it, they, I will look for movers. So Counselor Clark and moved seconded by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. And we'd heard the resolution, so I'll just call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. Okay. And that's everything from Parks and Rec. Okay, thanks. Do, uh, do you want to? Is it close enough that we can let, uh, council know just a verbal what's happening on New Year's Day? Okay, Andrea's going to just speak to something just verbally, uh, that, um. There you go.
Okay, so on New Year's Day, uh, the Halliburton Huskies are going to come practice at the AJ Larue Arena from two to three P M. Um, anyone from the public is allowed to come and watch the practice. And then. After the practice, they're going to stick around. We're going to have two public skates, both which you have to pre-register for. Um, there will be thirty-five people allowed on the ice plus fifteen Huskies. Uh, so people can come and skate with the Huskies and meet the Huskies. The Huskies will take turns coming on and off the ice. So that way the. Public has a chance to meet quite a few of them and skate with them. Um, so they've volunteered to stay for two, for two public skates to make that, um, part of that. Uh, DICE Art is covering the ice time, making this a community event. It's coming out of the community events budget. Um, and the Huskies are going to be accepting donations for the food bank, uh, that they'll, they'll drop off after the fact for, for everything. So. Something fun, exciting.
Yeah, it, it, you know, I've been, uh, we're, we're building one of the hockey players. And, uh, so I've been in contact with the coach and I said, how can we get you to come to Halliburton, come to our arena and do something? And I was trying to do something before Christmas, but their schedule's a little crazy. And then he said, what about New Year's Day? Uh, it's a stat holiday as we know, but staff have to go in anyway. They always have to do a three hour shift and check the plant. So. Big shout out to Mick Clark who said, sure, I don't mind. I love public skating. So the idea is they're coming at our invitation. And therefore they're not paying the ice time and public skating is also free, but by donation to the, um, to a food bank. And I have volunteered because it's sort of my idea to help screen as people come in the arena. Um, my husband Steve is going to help me. So if there's any counselors that want to help on New Year's Day, I can't remember the time. Is it two to four, two to five? Okay, we'll be advertising that shortly. Just working on the poster and a great way to, um, get out and see the Huskies, uh, practice and. They're doing really, really well. So that's.
Can I just mention too, there are, there's going to be public skating every day over the holidays. And there are some people, some business owners who've stepped up to sponsor some of the skates. So. That will all of course be translated onto the electronic sign and through social media and everything. So.
Are there any, uh, slots open if businesses or individuals still want to, uh. S- sponsor public skating?
Yes, there are still some spots available. There's, so if somebody is interested, they can contact me and I can. Get them set up. I know I've had a few business owners contact me. So I think they're just trying to figure out which dates work best for them. But yes, there are spaces available.
And what is the cost for the one slot of public skating?
Uh, it's two hundred dollars and that includes a week of advertising on the, uh, electronic sign.
Okay, so put the word out there because it's a great thing to do in the winter, uh, with, with kids. And, uh. As Deputy Mayor Kennedy, you'll, we'll remember we did something a couple of years ago, um, on New Year's Eve, but, uh, we're, uh. That this is working out. This is sort of in, in lieu of that of offering some kind of fun event. There'll be no food or drink or anything like that. And we will check if the snack bar wants to be open. That's their prerogative. If they don't, uh, it's not a regular day. So anyway, thanks, thanks for that. And, uh, I guess we'll move on. So thanks Andrea. Okay. Yeah, so, um, we are going to, how about, uh. We'll do museum and then we'll take a break and then we'll reconvene at ten thirty. And we do have Dan Collings, uh, available to come at that time. So we'll bring in Kate. To do her museum report and then we'll take a coffee break, whatever, break. And then we'll have our delegate.
Hello, Kate. Hello. How's everyone doing?
So yeah, in terms of um what's on at the museum, um, we're we're certainly uh doing uh some activities for the holidays. Um, so we've been collaborating with um, the recreation department who's bringing back the the Jolly Jog. Um, so this has been the home base for the Jolly Jog for the last uh few years now. So it's nice to see some of these activities, these regular activities, um, that everyone looks forward to coming back again. So uh, we're doing that and some other holiday programming. And also just we're in the the middle of making some preparations for, you know, what um, what programming is going to look like and activities are going to look like throughout um winter of twenty twenty-two. Um, and certainly, you know, we're going to keep that emphasis on trying to use our outdoor spaces as as much as we can as well, uh, because we're in this beautiful park. Um, so we'll be bringing back some things like our Snowshoe Lone program and collaboration with recreation and and other um outdoor activities as well as um showcasing what we have inside, inside our buildings. Uh, but definitely they're talking about how twenty twenty-two, um, you know, countrywide is going to be a year of recovery. Uh, so it's going to be really interesting to see, you know, how how the year plays out. And you know, that that hyper local tourism that we've been seeing, I I think it's going to carry on because people are really realizing what is in their own backyard um and wanting to take advantage of that, wanting to enjoy that. Uh, and now, you know, with this year of recovery, we're going to be able to reap the benefits of that, you know, over over an entire year. Uh, so that's that's just something really very much to look forward to. So yeah, it I would say, you know, very exciting days ahead for for twenty twenty-two. And in the meantime, we'll have some happy holidays.
That's great. And I I don't see the date of the Jolly Jog.
Jolly Jog is coming up on Sunday, on this coming Sunday, so that will be December twelfth at eleven A M. Um, so everyone's invited to come and gather at the museum just a little bit, little bit before eleven. We're going to have a couple of different options, a um, a longer um run jog walk, whatever, whatever you would like to do. You don't have to run, you don't have to jog. Um, it'll take you into town. Um, also a shorter one in the park. And yeah, all all festive festive outfits are encouraged. Doesn't have to be sweaters, doesn't have to be anything in particular. Just have fun, get festive and be active and and enjoy.
Great. Okay, so thanks. No jogging for me right now, but anyway. Thanks. Um, and also keep in mind, we still have uh books available, so the
Yes.
Wait. What's what's the title of it?
Halliburton History and Pictures.
A History and Pictures, available for twenty-five dollars. You can buy it in a museum, you can buy it here at the municipal office, makes a great Christmas gift, good coffee table book. There's a plug.
Definitely. And it's it's a great book to that you can dip into and get, you know, get little hid- history tidbits uh and great photos.
Okay, so um, uh mover and a second or questions I should ask if there's anything. No, good. Okay, so mover and a second to receive Kate's report, uh Counselor Clark and Counselor Wood Roberts. Be it result of the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the Halliburton Highlands Museum Report. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. So we will take a break and reconvene at uh ten thirty and then we'll uh have our delegation. So you can just, there you go. Okay, and we are uh back in session after our recess and we're able to uh bring our delegate in. Um, Dan Collings from the O P P, uh, your acting detachment commander. I hope that's the correct title. Uh, Dan is joining us by phone today. So welcome, Dan.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody.
So we have your report included in in our package uh of some incidents, but I just thought maybe um even Tamara, if you want to speak to the reason why we sort of invited you to come to council. Maybe there's been a a lot of concerns. Uh, certainly, we're all hearing it i- in our roles and and seeing it actually in some cases as staff at the Welcome Center are seeing things. Um, so Tamara, I'll maybe just uh turn it over to you to see why we invited Dan. And then Dan, uh, you can just speak to the um are are impressions correct or what's happening within policing and particularly in the village in Halliburton?
Yep, certainly. I think you've summed it up nicely that we've just over the last year in particular, like it seems to go in waves, but in the last year, again, we've been having some problems in the park with vandalism and people just reporting they're feeling unsafe in general. There's been issues at the library around gathering after hours in open hours as well um at the back of the area and always the activity isn't always so great. Um, I know Rails End has raised some concerns and also from the Welcome Center and um, I think part of this is just to raise awareness for the public too and for all of us about what we can do to work with the police to try and make a safer area, whether it's educating people on who to phone or that it's important to phone when they see something so that the police are aware because they can't do their jobs if they don't know that something's occurring. So I think with that, um, I'll also there's been questions raised through council recently about the industrial park um patrols and safety and so forth as well. So we've mentioned that to Mr. Collins as well and I think I'll turn it over to you, Dan, if that's okay. And we do thank you for answering all our emails when we do send complaints and things for you to look into.
Okay, I'll start with the park. Um, the uh the situational report that I submitted came, uh, I re- I did a request to our uh, a regional operational analyst to provide me with the statistics from our uh, our reporting system of calls for service. Um, these would be calls that were actually phoned in by the public or generated by officers who have come across um a a call for service or or a or a police related occurrence. And there's sixteen of them in the park area for twenty twenty-one to date. Uh, what I'm seeing as the the biggest trend is that when occurrences are seen by the public, uh, they're not called into the police. Uh, they're usually reported after the fact uh when it's when the when the occurrence is over and done with. Uh, some occurrences, uh, they have been criminal in nature um and are not connected to, say, the ongoing mischief that happened this summertime. Um, I uh, I think as a recommendation for the public and and for the municipality, uh, for the for the concerns they're having in the park is one, uh, encourage people to contact the O P P when they see something happening. Um, there is a non-emergent number and the nine one one number for emergencies. And also, um, you know, look into um alternatives to what there is for security in the park now. Uh, whether there are um, uh municipal employee patrols like bylaw or whether a and it's signed or whether there's things like um surveillance, whether it be um camera or video, that sort of thing. And uh, uh, better lighting for nighttime if the occurrences seem to be happening at night. I think generally the occurrences have been sort of a blend of the um nighttime and daytime. But at nighttime, if there's better lighting, uh, and I think of one occurrence in particular, when I worked at the detachment years ago, um, things like environmental design, um, where if there is places where there's habitual, say mischief happening, uh, if there's places where people can't readily hide. And I just think about years ago, there was a clump of cedar trees and uh, people kept taking a picnic table and putting it in the cedar trees and there's all kinds of evidence of garbage and alcohol consumption and uh and drugs and stuff. And the the table would get put back where it belonged and and then it would turn up in the trees again. And eventually the the municipality uh cut the trees up, uh, cut the bo- the lower limbs up so that there was no longer a place to hide. And the the table wasn't dragged there anymore and and they were and there was less instances of that sort of thing. So that's sort of what uh, uh, crime prevention or crime reduction by design, those sort of things. Uh, I guess an old way of saying is like target hardening. Uh, just i- if there's anywhere where there seems to be issues, if it if that environment could be made less desirable, uh, then that's an option. With respect to um industrial park, uh, I found four occurrences from the summertime regarding the theft of catalytic converters. Three of them was in the industrial park. One of them was in a different township or municipality. Uh, again, uh, crime prevention by environmental design or um or target hardening. As one of the occurrences, there was an um insecure building and in another occurrence, there was an insecure vehicle. Um, so things that the businesses can do is ramp up their own security. Um, ensuring that they lock everything up properly, ins- ensuring that they don't leave things lying around or left outside in an ins- on an insecure property. Um, things like better lighting and uh surveillance systems, security systems, uh, like alarm systems, that sort of thing. All all those type of precautions would make our job a lot easier. Um, it's really easy to just ask for more police presence. We do what we can. Uh, on the heels of that, um, catalytic converter theft, are those cur- those occurrences, we did increase focus patrols in that area whenever possible and we tracked them. Um, same thing with the park. Um, in the summertime, uh, I set up a focus patrol occurrence where uh the officers, whenever they were in the park or patrolling near the park, they would report that they did that. So that we could uh, we could track that we were, we were actually showing a a presence. Um, barring any questions, that's I have.
Okay, well, th- thank you for that, Dan. Um, and you know, just a a anecdotally myself, I I walk through the park quite often in the summertime and on several occasions I saw um and actually spoke to a group of people who were um about to open a bunch of alcohol and um get out their big glass pipes. Uh, and they were sitting in the ban shell at three o'clock in the afternoon, wide open eyes right there. So I walked up to them and I I basically told them that it wasn't probably the smartest idea to be doing that there. They should probably go to somebody's house and that drinking alcohol in a public park was um against the law. I didn't say who I was at all. I just said, you know, it's not the smartest idea to be here. They moved on, which was good. But it's just the brazen nature that uh a group of people would sit down at whatever it was, you know, like middle of the afternoon. We so it wasn't in a dark alley. It wasn't at nighttime. It wasn't in some cedar bushes. I'm just really shocked at uh some of the behavior that that I've certainly seen in and around. And I don't know that's a societal thing and that's part of the community safety and well-being plan that the county is developing to to uh, you know, help those people and and change that behavior. But um, Tamara, did you have one question? Then I'll open it up to counselors.
No, I was just going to make a couple of comments on some of the points that Dan raised in terms of environmental design and trying to do other things to uh, try and change some of this. And we are working on the camera installations throughout the park, so um, there's Rotary Park, the library Rails End and the Welcome Center are now getting coverage where they haven't before. So hopefully that will help once all that's in place. Um, and in terms of environmental design, I totally agree too. We look at the back of the library and places like that and look are the things that need to be opened up or is it more lighting? Over at the Rotary side with the uh old bathroom buildings where we have the uh Zamboni stored now, it has a lot of alcoves into it. And it all little doorways and everywhere there's a doorway, people smashed in those steel doors or graffitied them and wrecked the locks and tried to do whatever because they're out of sight and there's a spot to hide. So as part of our grant we got last year, we're reciting that building and we're taking all the alcoves out. So we're trying to keep those kind of things in mind to remove those hiding spots and things as we go, but definitely agree. There's a lot of work to be done still, but I think it does go in waves as well. There there's sometimes we don't see anything for a couple of years and then there seem to be problems going through.
Okay, so I'm opening it up to the floor and uh Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Um, yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. Um, Daniel, the the industrial park is as 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 has been alluded is a bit of a challenge and and I can see where there's some some traditional stuff with the catalytic converters, but I think it it's a bit of an area where there's not a lot of traffic. Um, there is opportunity for people to go through and I guess fill up their cars if they're trying to do a little midnight shopping without anything being open. Um, what's been proposed or thought of is is perhaps some cameras that uh either, you know, the Radat twenty-one in an industrial park or perhaps maybe on uh Mallard Drive or there and 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 um industrial park. Um, in your experience, do you do you think a a camera system, you know, that's kind of centralized, capturing traffic going in and out of that area would would provide some kind of a security for those businesses?
Well, absolutely. Uh, uh, anything is better than nothing, right? Uh, I mean, loo- looking at uh what they've uh been doing in Great Britain for several years now with the uh, uh, closed circuit TV all over the place, they've been solving quite a lot of crime uh with just with just a a feed going all the time. And then if there's an occurrence, they can go back and look at uh, look at that feed, uh, you know, from a certain, at a certain point in time and determine, you know, who or what vehicle was there. So yes, that would be be of great assistance.
Okay, any further questions? Uh, Counselor McKechnie and then Counselor Smith.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, um, I have always have can uh questions asked me, uh, Dan, about uh cottage break-ins and uh I I I we we all, all the my constituents, we talked and we say, you know, we got to write down any uh strange cars we see driving around. Some of us live in remote areas and things like that. But uh, any other ideas you've got to give to my constituents, that'd be great. Uh, uh, the other one, the question I have for you is um uh, and I have nothing against cottage rentals, but um, I know that I had do have uh people contacting me and they're saying it usually the uh problem happens on a uh Friday or Saturday night or Sunday night. Unfortunately, we don't have anybody working at that time. Um, you, do you have any uh um, solutions for for when there's a noisy, real noisy party or people letting fireworks off? I'm sure you get the odd one, but um, I I know I I have a few concerns out in in my ward here, like in regard to that. And the last one was that, and I was on business, on the main street in business for twenty-four years. And I sure can't tell you, gentlemen, how to do your job. But when uh, when you used to get out of the police cars, which I'm sure you still do a lot of, but it was quite a routine there for a few number of years there where your foot patrols would really, you know, not put the fear in the in the so-called bad guy, but it sure made uh all the um seniors and all the uh the the good people think, boy, ni- nice presence to see that uh gentleman walking down the uh main street with his uniform on and a a presence. So uh, thanks for all your good work. And if you just answer a couple of my questions there, that'd be great. Short little answers, that'd be great. Just con- conveying this from uh some of my constituents.
Go ahead, Dan.
For the co- for the cottage security, um, yeah, there's a lot of programs for that. There's, you know, like Neighborhood Watch, Cottage Watch, uh, the Lock it or Lose It program. Uh, and again, uh, in um crime prevention by environmental design, making your cottage look like it's or folks making their cottage look like it's uh constantly lived in or that somebody could be returning any moment, like they're just gone temporarily, could be back any moment. So things like uh, you know, security lighting and cameras and and a and a clearly established boundary, uh, whether it's, you know, something as simple as a a small fence or a small, uh, you know, or uh, you know, or gardens or whatever to show the boundary of the property. Things like, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of places that have quite a bit of, say shrubbery or, or, um, uh, like that type of guarding where there's a lot of hiding places, uh, like right near the building or up against windows, like if all windows are visible, blinds on windows, you know, interior lighting, uh, that sort of thing. Um, keeping, keeping the, uh, the property looking like it's constantly being used such as, especially in the wintertime, uh, driveway plowed, sidewalks shoveled, that, that sort of thing. Um, you know, even a, even something like a gate. So th- that's what environmental design is. It's, it's making your place look, uh, the most secure it can be, uh, and, and the least appealing for somebody to, to, to come in and do something nefarious, right? Uh, with respect to the cottage rentals, um, with re- uh, I mean, we've got a lot of complaints during the COVID stay-at-home order about, um, like Airbnb type things, short-term rentals. Uh, a lot of folks were wanting the police to, uh, put a stop to that kind of practice. Uh, unfortunately that's got everything to do with, you know, municipalities and bylaws, um, regarding, you know, commercial, residential, rental, that sort of thing. However, if there were COVID-based complaints, we would go deal with those. Um, the noise bylaws, yep, that's ongoing for a really long time. Um, most, you know, most of the time if there's a, a noise infraction, it's going to be after business hours and usually it's to do with a bylaw, um, regarding noise. We get deferred calls like that all the time and if we do get a noise complaint, we will respond, uh, but it's all dependent on priority as well. Uh, wha- what are the officers currently tied up with if they are tied up with something else and, you know, the response time? Also, it's, it's difficult, you know, you get a call and, you know, so whatever lake, uh, somebody calls about fireworks on a lake, but they don't know exactly where they're coming from. So you have to realize the officer, when they get to that lake, they've gotta try to figure out where it's happening. So they've got to access the lake somewhere, see if they can see where it's coming from. And if they can, they can, you know, go and try and find the place. Uh, but with, you know, with the maze of cottage roads around some lakes, that could take some time and, and I, I get the frustration of some folks, uh, you know, there, there is the response time. It's just the nature of Halliburton County. It's a, it's a big area, uh, it's a small number of officers for a very large area and it takes time to go from A to B, just about anywhere here.
Well, thank you. Oh, sorry, Dan, go ahead, I forgot.
Right. And reference the foot patrols, um, yep, I agree a hundred percent that visibility is really key, um, and community engagement and that's one of the things I'm trying to, uh, improve and increase while I'm here. Got a lot of, lot of new, young, impressionable officers here and, and I've been, uh, letting them know what my expectations are regarding focus patrols and ride checks and foot patrols and traffic, uh, patrols and such. And absolutely I can, uh, I can agree with you a hundred percent that, uh, that seeing officers out and about in the, in the towns and villages is a big bonus, uh, for both the community and for us. So I, I am trying my best to increase those as well.
Okay. Thank you so much for that, Dan. And I think the, the, the main purpose of bringing you here today, it's great to talk about the cottage rentals and all these other things, but was the fact that we did have a request from, um, a group of business owners on industrial park as well as our own, um, concerns with the municipal property in, particularly in Head Lake Park, things like the band shell that, uh, cost a lot of money and invested, uh, you know, in our community, create a, a wonderful place that, uh, can hold music and, and, and events and then to see that vandalized door or the library, uh, it's just disheartening. Um, so we, you know, we just, it's great to see this report, it's great to have you here today. I think there was, I think I saw one other hand for, one for the question, oh, two, pardon me, Council Wood Roberts and then Council Smith.
I, I just wanted to say to Dan, I agree with him. He does have many new, young and impressionable officers, but I think he's very fortunate in that his senior officers are very community-minded, the majority. And, um, just congratulations, I, you know, I think they can only do better under your supervision and your two ludge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Council Smith.
Uh, thank you very much and, uh, Dan, thanks for your time, it's boring. There was a, you mentioned gates and I'd be interested in your perspective on, uh, on gates, should they be open or should they be, uh, closed when people are away and, and locked up? Uh, also, uh, you know, with respect to, uh, a number of our roads, we get a lot of complaints about speeding. Uh, in fact, I think we've shared some statistics with you where we've tracked speeding vehicles, uh, on roads and, uh, any thoughts about what people can do in, uh, in that regard? Um, and then, uh, finally, uh, with respect to industrial park and Head Lake Park, um, you know, you've given us some statistics here, but can you give us any sense of comparison to other communities? Is there anything extraordinarily good or extraordinarily bad about, uh, uh, what's happening here and, uh, and, and therefore, you know, how effective?
Okay. I'll, I'll go with the gates first. Uh, I've been actually asked what the OPP take was on gated, gating pub- or, uh, non-public access roads or private roads. So the, the big thing about gates is if it's on a, if it's on an access, uh, then I, what I recommended was check with local authorities to find out what the, the, um, the requirements or the, the legalities are there. Um, having been a former firefighter in another community, there were some gated places where we were provided, you know, with keys to locks to certain gates that were on the trucks so that if we were responding to it, uh, an emergent call, whether it was fire or ambulance, that we were able to, to get access. So that is a consideration with respect to gates. Um, you know, it depends who you talk to, uh, um, I, I can't recommend one or the other. That's, it's all situation unique or individual unique, uh, into whether they gate, decide to gate their property or not. Um, if there's no issue of access for emergency services, um, then what's wrong with having a locked gate? If, uh, I mean, we see a lot of vacant properties that, that are fenced and gated and the gates locked. Um, however, you know, like you say, a, a residential property or a seasonal property, uh, even just the sight of a closed gate will cause most people to just drive by. It doesn't necessarily have to be locked. So, I mean, those are sort of the, the things to weigh in on, to consider. Uh, so to, you know, to recap that, check with local, um, you know, laws and requirements and then decide, well, personally what works best for that property. With respect to speeding, I don't think it's ever gonna end. I mean, uh, there's been automobiles forever and police have been doing enforcement forever and it doesn't seem to be slowing people down. Um, we've, we've got certain hotspots that we focus on and then there's other places that we respond to where, you know, uh, it's say, um, not complaint-driven but call-for-service-driven. Um, our officers, when I look at their statistics for traffic enforcement, we are, uh, we're, we're sitting pretty good compared to the rest of central region. Um, we, we do have a, we do have a traffic plan, a traff- uh, traffic enforcement plan and the, the officers here are doing a pretty good job at it. Um, I think all we can do is try to keep focusing on where we have the, the largest amount of, of issues or the largest amount of calls for service. Um, there are speed measuring devices that are available to, um, you know, if an, if a area is identified, um, as a, as a hotspot, we can, we can bring in a resource, see what the, monitor the traffic for a point of time and, and just see what the general speeds are. Um, and we found sort of both ends of the spectrum historically where, uh, at sometimes we've been constantly told a certain ar- area, everybody's speeding. And then we bring in this, this, uh, monitoring system, it's called a black cat system. We bring in this monitoring system and then we find that the average, um, the average speed is essentially the speed limit, that, uh, you know, that there are, even though yes, there are some speeders, the majority of people are, are obeying the speed laws. So, I mean, there's other things can be done too if it is, if it's say a residential or a school area or a, an area that's significant, uh, like that, uh, to get people to slow down, other alternative speed bumps, extra stop signs at, at intersections, just things that shorten the gap or shorten the distance of the roadway before people have to make some kind of a maneuver. That'll, will keep people going slower. So those are considerations as well. Uh, but just strict enforcement, uh, my own, this is my own personal view, or not my view, my own personal observations, is that we, we can do enforcement, we can write speeding tickets, but we're finding generally it's, it's not slowing people down. Um, it may slow that one person down, but it, every, you know, you just sit in one spot a- and do radar and, you know, while you're writing up your notes from one ticket, there's another one comes by right behind it. So, um, we, we'll keep trying. I don't think we can stop it, but we'll certainly do our best to, to do enforcement. Education is a big, big piece, uh, but at the same time, coming up with alternatives to, uh, to get people to slow down might be the way to go there. Uh, comparison to other communities for, um, mischief to property or say problems in the park, no, I, I haven't done that. Um, sorry about that. I, I, I can check, I can get our, um, um, our analysts to maybe check with some other, if I identify maybe some neighbor communities that have similar sized parks, similar sized demographics, then maybe I could come up with their numbers as well. But I think this is sort of part and parcel to one of the comments about, uh, you know, folks gonna crack open some alcohol right at three in the afternoon. Um, I've been finding as well that in the past couple of years, maybe COVID-related, maybe the stay-at-home related, maybe not, but, uh, think, like, places for people to go and do have been quite limited the last couple of years due to the pandemic and some people just aren't patient enough to wait till they can go to a proper licensed facility and decide, well, I'll just, I'll just go sit in the park and have one 'cause I can't get in the restaurant because it's full of capacity or it's closed or whatever. Um, I've generally been seeing that as well. Um, and, and we have been finding that at other places, not just in Head Lake Park. And we've been dealing with it as we come across it.
So, Dan, I just want to thank you. We didn't intend to take you up a half an hour of your time because really we asked you in because of those two things, which is industrial park and particularly Head Lake Park and you have been very receptive to taking questions across the gamut from speeding to property, uh, safety, but it's really been helpful and, uh, hopefully members of the public are listening as well. So we appreciate, uh, your time. I believe Tamara has one last question and then we'll... To unmute Tamara.
Sorry, I was just gonna, uh, ask one more question about signage. Like, do, do you see, Dan, that there would be any issue if we created some signage perhaps in the park? Um, advertising non-emergency numbers and so forth for people to call if they do witness a crime or anything they're concerned about as a way to get more stats into you if things are actually transpiring?
Absolutely. I mean, it depends, it depends what you, uh, what people want aesthetically in their green space, right? Uh, if, if, uh, if you chose to put up a sign that says, uh, you know, kinda like the Crime Stoppers billboards you see around, the, it's great that there's exposure to that and people know how to, you know, if they see something, call somebody, right? Don't just, uh, you know, kinda say, oh, that's not right and drive on by. If they know readily what they can do about it. Uh, the thing about the Crime Stoppers though, it's, it's, there's a slow reaction time because it goes to a central Crime Stoppers, it gets disseminated through a, a region, back to a detachment and by the time we get it at this detachment, it's usually a couple of days to a week old. Whereas if people call the OPP, um, operation, or communication center directly, they, the closest available officer will be dispatched. So, and there's two numbers, right? There's the, the non-emergent one triple eight number and then there's nine one one for emergencies. Posting something like that is fine. Uh, you know, if you, if you, if you see something, you know, you, I, whatever verbiage you come up with, if you see something, here's the numbers, right? If you see a medical emergency, call nine one one. If, uh, you know, if, if you see a criminal offense, uh, or, or any offenses or whatever, you can call this other number, so.
That, that's a great, uh... Yeah, that's a great way to end it and we do have, um, that community event board still on the backside of the electrical panel. It's, uh, just at the entrance to the park at this time. So, so once again, thank you so much, Dan, for, uh, joining us here at our meeting today and, um, answering so many questions, uh, right from one spectrum to the other and, uh, thank you for all you do. So we will, I'll look for a mover in a second or two to receive, uh, the report. Uh, Council Wood Roberts and Council Clark. Be resolved that the community, the whole acknowledges receipt of the briefing from Dan Collings interim detachment commander for the Halliburton Highlands detachment of the Ontario Provincial Police regarding recent police occurrences in Head Lake Park. All in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Dan. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. So next we will move into building and bylaw and we're gonna bring Carl and Rob into the meeting. And first is the building permit activity report. And hi, Carl and Rob. We will, Carl, you can speak to the building permit report.
Uh, very good. Yeah, so building permits are still up. Um, the weather's in, people are gonna be slowing down, but, uh, this weekend we're gonna see eleven degrees and some rain, so I get rid of some of the snow and people might still continue to build. Um, otherwise, not much going on with, uh, building permit activity report for November. Uh, we are currently in the process of doing our final testing for the portal and, uh, mobile inspections. So we're, uh, still on track to have that, uh, in place for the new year. Otherwise, it's, uh, it's vod hole, I have that.
That's okay. That's lots. And just with the portal, you've been dealing and communicating well with the Halliburton Home Builders. Not that everybody who builds is a member of that, but it certainly can reach an awful lot of people, um, letting them know and advising them. You've had some meetings, uh, to date with them. Do you wanna speak to that?
I, yeah, so we, we, we did let know at the, at the beginning when, that we were going into this process, they were going to have us on, um, to do a presentation via Zoom to the members, but then that got canceled, so nothing else has happened since then. Um, I am doing a presentation to their membership, uh, in January with regards to the sta- uh, changes to, uh, to stairs and building code, uh, which is definitely gonna affect a lot of, uh, building activity, um, in, in the area. So, uh, in the new year, once the portal gets up and going, we are gonna reach out again to the Home Builder Association, let them know what's, that, that this is now in place and to book times to, uh, uh, go through a, um, a run through the system and get signed in as to how to actually apply for permits online, submit drawings to the portal and, uh, book inspection. So we'll be doing that in the new year once, uh, everything's up and going and we're comfortable with this system.
Okay. That, that's great to keep that communication open. And I mean, when we see the, you talked to this about it with another report too, that it is, uh, I mean, while the number of permits are up, it's also the value of the construction is up as well. And I would say is 2021 a year, we haven't had like a gardens development, we haven't had a home hardware, we, this is all just, I would, there is still there saying some, there's commercial, but I don't believe that we've had any sort of one large project that would skew it in 2021. This is just growth.
Yeah, exactly. That's the case. Uh, we haven't had a, a very large project that just pumps the permit, uh, value up or permit fees up. This is just the one-off building permits.
Incredible. Um, any questions or comments to Carl? If not, we'll get a mover to receive your report. Council Clark and seconded by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Be resolved that the community, the whole received the November 2021 building activity report as information. All in favor? Okay, carried. And next, uh, is our bylaw report.
Morning. Pretty, uh, simple statistics, closed a few cases this month and, uh, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I'll open it up to see if there's any questions. Council Smith.
Uh, thank you. Um, uh, Rob, uh, again, appreciate the report. Uh, you know, I note that, uh, with both, uh, zoning and encroachment, that, uh, over half of the complaints that have been received this year are still, uh, open, if you like, unresolved. Um, you have any suggestions or recommendations in terms of things that council could do to, uh, to help? Um, you have any suggestions or recommendations in terms of things that council could do to uh to help you get these uh these issues, uh, these complaints addressed more quickly?
Um, at the top of my head, no, I don't. Um, uh, that'd be something I would definitely need to research on your question there and uh I can definitely get back to you on that. I could say another staff member um might alleviate some of the stress on on the the amount of uh things that are that are open. Um, like we said last last meeting, I I'm not heavy handed in in getting anybody to comply with everything. So we're on working hand in hand with the homeowners, um, with all the property manager, uh, not managers, but property owners. And and getting them compliantly done. So we don't have to um lay any fines and things like that. But it it does come down where there's gonna be some things where. Uh, enough will be enough and and enforcement will have to take measure just like the three cases that are are we're currently seeking in addition to.
Okay. Well, thanks for that. And you know, um, I encourage you, uh, as time permits to uh to even speak with your colleagues in other communities. Uh, to see if there are ideas because some of these things uh do seem to uh drag for, you know, for quite a while. Um, the other uh topic I'd like to ask about is with respect to uh winter parking and uh and snow plowing. And uh any uh comments you might make to the public with respect to uh to that. And and again, any recommendations to counsel in terms of adjustments we might need to make to bylaws? Many communities have signs posted, for example, saying that you can't park on streets certain hours during November and April because of snow plowing operations.
Yeah, so I I've noticed that and and I I think uh there was one, the snow plow operators, I mean, they can. I'm not sure if they still do or not. I should all touch base with Rob Camel on when he gets back from his training. Um, and maybe even give them some some of the, I know in the in the past, Carl, I don't know if you can speak to it or not. If Kristen, I think Kristen sent out some pamphlets to the roads guys to put on the plow with the plows. And if they saw anything, they could put the these pamphlets on and say a reminder to people like no plowing, I mean, sorry, no parking on the roads. Between the the twelve AM and the seven AM uh overnight while snow plow operations are in effect. Um, I know I did uh at the beginning of the November, I believe, uh, once November hit. I did send out social media posts about reminding everybody that to to stay off the roads between um twelve AM and seven AM. As per our bylaws, they no overnight parking uh between the the months of November the first to April fifteenth. Um, I do encourage the the public to uh call, uh, file a complaint with me. And that way that can get investigated. Uh, and uh, and if need be possible enforcement for whether it be a parking ticket or. Um, the vehicles stayed there for several days and then we'll we would we would have to remove it ourselves and have it towed out of there. So I I do do some some posts on social media. Um, I can definitely do another one and and keep it up through the winter months. Uh, just constantly reminding sta- uh, not staff, but uh the public that you need to. Not park on the roads overnight. So our roads can be properly plowed and and maneuvered through safely.
Yep, thank you, Robert. Carl, do you want us to quickly speak to that?
Yeah, I I know when I first started here, we actually did hold a, uh, I think we did appoint the uh the plow drivers as bylaw officers for the purpose of um. Of of towing vehicles that are that are parked on the road while they're trying through the roads. And um, it's not something that we've looked at since then. I don't know if it's if it's an issue. Uh, it's not something that I've heard as as an issue from um our roads department. But again, yeah, it's something that we can check with Rob. Is it an issue that people are parking overnight? Uh, because we work during the day. Uh, we don't see the issue unless we're here. So, uh, we can look into that. And if that's the case, we can go through that process again and and appoint the new operators. There's probably a whole new lack of operators out there that uh could be appointed and uh get vehicles towed if they need them.
Okay, and I'll leave that with Tamara to communicate back to Rob and he can let us know on that one. So, uh, is there anything for the Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Just uh just to fall off on that, we're talking here about between midnight and seven AM. Um, most of our roads are are actually plowed. Um, you know, certainly some of them are started at seven AM, but like yesterday, they were still plowing roads at two o'clock in the afternoon. Um, and uh, and so question is, do do we have a sufficient window? Uh, and the appropriately timed window uh in terms of uh parking on our roads for this time of year?
Yeah, Tamara, want to speak to that and then we should move on because.
Yeah, I I think people by now know not to park on the roads anywhere in the winter because roads need to be plowed. It's just a constant reminder. We do put out advertising. It's on our website. Robert's going through social media. If the plow trucks can't get through somewhere or can't plow around, they'll get in touch with the bylaw office. Currently, if they can't do anything or don't have time because they're trying to get through and they can follow up. Uh, unless there's a complaint, though, they don't have anything to follow up on. But Rob and Carl can, we'll talk to Rob and make sure that the processes are still working as they should be.
Great. Okay, so I'll look for a move. Okay, okay. Sorry.
I'm going to move. Last time I checked, um, climate change, it just, it doesn't say it's gonna snow between twelve and seven. People park during the day or whatever, the snowstorm hits. You know what I mean? The it's called, uh, we live up north. It's it's and in the city, they even have a bigger problem. All those subdivisions there, all the people are parking on the streets. The storm hits in the middle of the day. So I think we just gotta use some common sense and let the gentleman do their work. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just look for a mover in a second or two to receive the bylaw report update. Thank you, Counselor Clark, Counselor Wood Roberts. You result that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the November twenty twenty one bylaw update report. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, we're going to go into finance. I'm not sure if Barbara's joining us today. She hunkered down?
No, she she's no, she's trying to get the budget done, so.
That's what I thought. I just confirming. I didn't think she was joining us today. So really, the first one is just to check summary. So I'll ask for mover seconder. Uh, Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor McKechnie. You result that the community, the whole acknowledges receipt of the twenty twenty one. I don't know what it means dash eleven. Why dash eleven? Okay, it's the eleventh month. Okay, the twenty twenty one eleven, that's November. Check summary. Pardon me. All in favor? Feel like I was reading something else from planning. Um, results of the supply of a what? One ton truck for the Parks and Rec Department. Tamara, did you want to speak to this or anybody? It's there, the report's there.
The report is there, the resolution's there.
Yep. So mover in a seconder? Uh, Counselor Clark and then Counselor Wood Roberts. You result that the community, the whole receive and acknowledge this report concerning the results of the request for tender twenty twenty one dash rec dash seventeen being a tender to obtain a one ton truck with dump box for the Parks and Recreation Department. And that the community, the whole recommends that council award the truck as outlined in the tender to Finch Auto Group of London, Ontario for a cost of ninety nine thousand nine hundred and thirty one dollars. All in favor? Okay, carried. And benefit renewal. I'm not sure who's speaking to that.
Yeah, um, basically, this is a standard renewal. We're looking at a four point, or sorry, and a one point six six percent increase overall, which is five thousand five hundred and eighty six dollars nineteen cents this year. Um, currently, given our experience ratings on our Dejardins side this year, which is some significant increase. Um, mixed with our decrease on the health and dental dental portion, it's brought it down to that. Um, it it's not an option, not a good option right now anyway to go to market with our current experience. And also through the county service delivery review, we're still discussing options for potential uh benefit consortiums. Um, so that that's going to be investigated more in the coming year.
Okay, any questions? Someone to move the resolution? Counselor Smith, Counselor Clark. We resolve that council approved the employee benefit coverage proposal from Dejardins and Greenshield for renewal effective January first, twenty twenty two. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. So next we'll go into administration. There's a lot to read in the meeting notes from the Service Delivery Review Steering Committee. It's really for our information. So I don't know, Tamara, you want to summarize or?
Uh, not a lot to summarize, but um basically, these reports are available on the county council agendas for the steering committee. But I thought just for ease of reference, we would uh put them into one PDF and have them available for you to hear to keep up with what's going on if you haven't had a chance. Um, basically, there's seven different subcommittees working and they're very active. And some things have been recommended at this point for county budget consideration and others are still being investigated. But if you have any questions on anything you read, I can try to answer.
Well, and like you say, they're really here for our reference too, to make sure. I mean, you could watch the county council meeting, uh, service delivery review meetings, but they're they're lengthy. It's great to have the reports right here in our agenda uh for reference. So Counselor Clark?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Tamara, yeah, there's a lot of information there and and I imagine there's different complexities based in the different service areas. Um, but overall, any kind of a timeline when you start seeing some of these things kind of being wrapped up and and being able to actually start implementing some uh some change or or consolidation or or whatever decisions may be?
Well, quite a few decisions have been made already, actually, like they've uh, I'd have to go through them one at a time now to. Yeah, like the hiring of an economic development uh person at the county that they've taken on the short term rental initiative at that level. Um, yeah, there's just a number of, think the procurement person at the county was a part of one of those initiatives. Basically, every area, there's been, like you said, there's been some slowdowns too, like the roads working group right now. They're a little short staffed in the roads management sector. So that part might slow down. There's always a number of reasons why some things will move ahead. But there seems to be a lot of activity in all these areas and it's certainly keeping us all helping, trying to keep it, keep it moving forward.
Overall, the best thing that, you know, even if there's very, very subtle changes or or things in the works is that, um. You know, the the service delivery review at the county level was not a like done and check and here's the report. This is ongoing. This is a huge amount of staff time, but it's a lot of staff coordination as well. And we all know when um when you're meeting, even if it's on Zoom, uh, you know, a a lot can can happen when you're sharing with your colleagues. They're sort of being forced to share. Some of those things were already happening anyway, but um, you know, like just things in waste management uh are going forward. And so there's a lot of collaboration uh and sharing of ideas. And I think it's really fantastic to see that everybody's talking. They're not working in silos.
Yeah, that's a good example of that, too. They worked on the RFP for those hazardous risks together from that group. So, yeah, there's there's lots of those smaller collaborations coming out of those meetings for sure.
And the steering committee, which is the mayors and deputy mayors of every of each of the four townships, we meet on a quarterly. So I think we'll be, we had our meeting and then we'll, it'll be sometime in the new year. We didn't set a date specifically for that, but the working groups are meeting pretty much monthly. So, okay, mover seconder to receive? Counselor Smith, question?
I'm happy to move receipt, but I I just had a follow up question there. Uh, and Barry, you've, uh, as you mentioned, there's a lot of meetings been going on and uh. Um, I guess a good point, the the roads reports that were in this package, uh, you know, didn't show uh great progress. Uh, but yes, you're, you know, correct. There's been some staffing issues, I suppose, in all the municipalities. It's impacting that a little bit. But uh, um, you have an overall perspective right now in terms of, uh, you know, the strategy core engagement for both us and the county identified quite a few opportunities. And laid out a roadmap. Uh, do you still see that roadmap as being realistic? And um, you know, the kinds of opportunities that were identified, both economic savings and improved service levels is it's something that we can realistically achieve?
I think there's opportunities for improved service levels. I don't know that there's always gonna be a cost saving to them. Um, because sometimes that means improving. Well, obviously, improving means you're gonna be spending more money usually. Um, but there also have been some things that have been going through that group that, like Andrew said, we already do. Um, so there's been discussions around the dot software. Well, DIZART's already got that in place, like. So some of that where they automated traffic control attendance is another thing. We're moving ahead with that. So sometimes we're part of discussions where we're already there too. And but as you said, there's a lot of staff shortages in that area right now in the senior management role. So I think that one's not gonna move ahead as quickly right now at the moment. But their next meeting is January, so we'll see where it goes from there.
Yep, it's ongoing. Okay, thank you, Counselor Smith. I did put you down as the mover. So if I could get a seconder for the motion? Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy. You resolved that the community, the whole acknowledges received the meeting notes from the County Service Delivery Review Steering Committee working groups. All in favor? Carried. And I'll, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, and I will let you know when the next meeting is and you can watch that online as well if you want. Uh, election services, RFP results. Mallory?
Hey, speaking of collaboration, so this is joint uh request or proposal that went out um with all four municipalities that will have an election. Um, so the clerks um had this RFP up on October fourteenth and it closed on November fifteenth. And then individually, everyone scored and then we met a couple of times to compare our scores. The good thing is that there was, no one was way out in left field. We all pretty much had the same idea on how to rate the company. So there were five submissions. Um, they all complied with the submission requirements, which was the first criteria. And then after that, they were rated on um experience and experience of their staff, their references. So three references were provided by each company. Uh, professionalism, quality of product, features and specifications, and quality and responsiveness of submission and pricing. So pricing could be, if they gave a price that didn't make any sense, they wouldn't get a very good score on that because they were to elaborate on the pricing as well. So, um, the actual RFP was developed in coordination with IT because obviously a lot of this is very technical. Um, but the good thing is that we're actually, I shouldn't say behind, but a lot of other municipalities have already done voting, internet television voting services. So there's a lot of very good examples of RFPs that you can release. And that's what we took advantage of. So of the five submissions that were given to us, Seidel Canada to us represented, they they just did a very good submission. They they have a ton of experience in in Ontario elections. Security is is amazing. Um, their accessibility features, they've won awards for their accessibility. So we're recommending based on their proposal that that we go forward with them. They just seem like a very, very great company. Um, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. It's well within our election budget because based on our twenty eighteen voter counts, of course, we don't have the vote list for this year. So it will be higher than that number. Um, but it's well within what we've budgeted. So if there's any questions, please let me know.
Okay, Mallory, thank you for that. And and I think it's really important to note in the criteria that pricing is only ten percent factor. Um, so which so many times in quotes, people always think that the lowest price is the best price and clearly it isn't always. So I think the rating and how how you did it and you did it independently and then looked at it collectively and all four townships came up with the same. Did you want, sorry?
I just wanted to add too that I I think sometimes, and it shouldn't be with this council, but sometimes requests for tenders are are confused with requests for proposals. Might be a vastly different quality in in two proposals. And so so pricing isn't isn't as highly rated because it it it's a factor, of course. Um, but you might get a completely different product with two different proposals. So you're really going off the the what they've offered.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, and does this include postage for?
It does. So the price per voter includes mailing out the package so that they can vote.
Okay, um, questions from fellow counselors? No, looks good. Uh, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and thanks, Mallory. Uh, a great report. Uh, and. Yep, thank you. Uh, and thanks, Mallory. Uh, a great report, uh, and uh, you know, uh, very interesting that all the municipalities uh. As far as reached the same conclusion, independent of each other. One question, uh. The uh, a big uh actor here is obviously the quality of the voters list. And um, and so uh, you know, there, this firm is going to be paid per essentially per voter, per name on the list. Um, is, are there any steps that are being taken to improve the quality of the list? Um, because that, as I said, was a, you know, I found it a significant issue uh last time around. Uh, people that uh shouldn't have been on the list were on it. Kids that had moved away from home ten years ago, lived in another province now, were still there. And uh, in other cases where there were newer residents that, you know, newer had been in their place for two or three years and their names still weren't on the list. What can we do to get that list at starting point to be a better, better quality?
So our voter list comes from MPAC. Um, they get their resources from so many different areas and then they try to compile it together into a voter list. So one thing we're going to start doing in the new year is encouraging people to go to voter lookup.ca to ensure that they're on the list. I've actually already done that because I recently moved. So um, it it's important for, for example, to make sure you're on it. Another thing that happens with the voters list is that you have a number, obviously, I'm just doing a little education session here, but you have a number of renters, so that they'll have to be added to the list as well. And then people in long-term care facilities. So what is happening and it and I I think it's a result of of it not being in the right place right now, but Elections Canada is actually going to be taking over municipal voter lists um in the next election. So it's going to not, it's no longer going to be an MPAC responsibility where it's 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 kind of tied to, I guess, our property. And Elections Canada has has different resources. So that might improve the quality of the voters list as we go forward, just because of where they get their sources. Um, but in terms of updating the list, we're going to start hitting pretty hard on the voter lookup.ca to make sure that's correct. And then, of course, the clerk's given the list and we go through um our our information in our office um and try to improve it as much as we can. But we're still, we're still with the old system this next election. But after that, they are transferring it to a new, a new overseer, which will be Elections Canada.
So MPAC is still doing it for twenty?
They definitely are. Yeah, they're still on it and and actually they did a um information sess- session recently. And then Elections Canada had a representative come in and just explain how they're starting to get geared up for this transfer over. Because it just, it it does make more sense in in terms of the long run for it to do with Elections Canada. They have different information because they have voter information for provincial elections, which isn't tied to your your property the same way. So i- it will be interesting. They'll have to, they'll have to get it geared up for what in some ways is more of a complicated uh voter list, smaller, but slightly more complicated.
Great. Um, Mallory, walk us through then what happens on election night in an electronic system uh as opposed to a paper, uh, even if we had mail-in ballot before, so.
Yeah, so you have, so you you have to work out with your vendor how that's going to work. But basically, when, if you have, we we will have a kiosk as well, so if some people need to come in and use our system to vote. The clerk will say when the time cutoff is with the company and with an auditor there as well. So it's, it's going to be interesting because it's not going to be, you just cut off your poll at a certain amount, right? So they wait for the key of when the cutoff is. And then if people have already started to vote, they can still complete their vote in the system, I believe is how it works. So, yeah, it will be interesting. It's going to be different to do it this way, but there are, there are protocols in place for that, for sure.
So you're physically going to still be here in the office?
Oh, yeah.
With some other staff?
I have to be, yeah.
I thought so. And so then you get fed the electronic information when, when?
So it gets processed. So because, because there's so many security features and because everyone's vote is kind of, I shouldn't say scrambled, but because of privacy issues, it has to kind of stop in the system and then translate it back onto our list. So it might take, it it's not instant, the results, but they're pretty close. So it it takes a few minutes for everything to process and to see if those final results are, but they should be pretty quick. We won't have people here into the wee hours counting because it's going to be remote, obviously, the way it's done.
Or envelopes jamming up on?
Yeah.
Slicers, which happened before. Um, well, any other further questions to Mallory? This is uh exciting, great that all four townships uh are doing this. Um, okay, mover, second or please? Counselor Donaldson, Counselor Smith? We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges, received the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election services RFP results. And further, the committee, the whole recommends that council award the RFP for the provision, internet and telephone voting services to Cital Canada in the amount of two dollars and seventy-five cents plus HST per voter. All in favor? Okay, carried. Um, oh, procedural bylaw?
Okay, um, this one, I made some, I made amendment to this report yesterday because our procedural bylaw requires that we have a foot, we we um notice at a council meeting and then we pass it the next council meeting. So we actually have to pass this one in January. So um, there's a lot of suggestions in this one in terms of meetings. I'm not sure what we did in the past when it was a regular election year. I believe probably we might have just canceled meetings on the fly when we need to cancel them. But my interest in in these amendments is that we understand going into a regular election year, how our meeting schedule is going to work and that it makes sense for all of us. Another thing that's being recommended through this amendment is that we um cancel committee, the whole meetings, which we're having one right now in December. And then we hold our regular uh council meeting on this day. So that's how it would move, it would work moving forward. Um, having the three meetings kind of put together in December when a lot of reporting's due and a lot of staff are trying to get a lot of things done and and budget's really front of mind. Um, it's a lot of, it's a lot to deal with for everyone, I'm sure. So that was where that recommendation came from. Another, there, a lot of it was focused on December because obviously that was the month we were coming into. But a few suggestions for our regular committee meetings too, to ensure that we have quorum when we, when we hold meetings, one's pretty late in December. Um, so I don't know if you guys want me to go each, through each point or if there's questions about particular suggestions? Oh, there are big ones, sorry, before you you go on, um, the the Elections Act was revised and the term for the new council now begins on November fifteenth. And our previous procedural bylaw said that we were holding our our inaugural in December. So because it's been moved up for the new term, uh, the suggestion is to to have that inaugural right away, right after. And because the new term begins on a Tuesday, in the next election year, it would literally be on November fifteenth that the inaugural would take place. So then the new term would be sworn in right away and then they could get going.
So they would have an inaugural meeting, close that meeting and then start a council meeting at like ten after or quarter after nine?
The the inaugural will be on November fifteenth and then the council meeting wouldn't be till the twenty-second or?
Oh, pardon me. Okay. Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, the, all the points were in there and they were highlighted in yellow, so I'll just open it up to the floor. I think we don't need you to go through them line by line. They were there and uh, so I I have one comment, but I'll save that for later. I'll see questions from the floor. Counselor Clark just has a thumbs up, so that's a good job. Um, 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 what was my question? Oh, my question was regarding uh electronic participation because I had talked the other day about, oh, I wonder if our procedural bylaw, not knowing that it was on the agenda. I hadn't looked at it yet. And uh, because while the discussion, we're not going to have it right now about when we start to meet in person. I was anticipating, um, you know, it will be sometime into the new year where we're, uh, this council chamber is not big enough to meet in person without wearing masks. We're not having a meeting wearing masks. Nobody will hear us. It'll be uh uncomfortable. So we'll continue in this format until the time that we can safely meet in this room. But we'll, could do a hybrid where um if a counselor is not able to participate for whatever reason, they could have a doctor's appointment in Toronto on a Monday night and not be able to make it back. They shouldn't be penalized for that. They should be able to participate. So I basically checked with Mallory and electronic participation is going to still stay in here and still be included. One thing um that I noticed from uh another board that I'm on is they do limit the number of people. So once we're back to meeting in person, they limit the number of board members, in this case, who can participate that way. Basically, the intent of that is, and we can discuss that later, but the intent of that is that that you don't have people who are just skipping off and goofing off and um. Tamara, you want to interject or you want me to wait?
Yeah, I was just going to say it's still written in there that it's up to the discretion of the chair anyway. So I think it's intentionally been written flexibly to allow for those things that you mentioned, like being able to participate, even if there's.
And and we do anticipate, I mean, COVID's not going to be over in March. It's not going to be so. And what we, one thing that we've seen with electronic participation in general is our delegation this morning. Dan Collins was able to stay at work. He didn't have to, you know, drive twenty minutes to Halliburton to sit in here and twenty minutes back home or wherever he is working from. Um, there are people who want to participate from all over. They could be in Toronto and be a delegation. So I think the hybrid model going forward is going to be great for uh for people. We're all set up here. I'm the only one with the microphone today, but we will, we have the technology already in place. And uh, so the with the hybrid model would be that, you know, counselors are here and staff could come in and zoom in. Uh, delegates could come in and zoom in. Um, and depending on where COVID restrictions are, either members of the public can be sitting in here if that's possible, if that's, you know, technically possible through health uh regulations, or they can still be watching on vi- on video on YouTube. So our, we're different. People say, oh, well, we do meetings this way. I said, yeah, but we're under the municipal act. It's very different. We have to be open and transparent and available for the public to to participate. So um, so anyway, the procedural bylaw, as it's sitting right now, does allow for that. And uh, you know, there could be a morning when Counselor Smith says, like, there's a foot of snow and I don't know why DICE Art Road hasn't, haven't plugged my driveway yet. Can I participate electronically? Yes, you can log into the meeting. So that there's a lot of circumstances. I think it's going to really work going forward. But if there's any comments from any of the other pieces in terms of meeting dates, times, Counselor McKechnie?
Um, no, I, this is probably would never happen, but I'm just saying in this uh day and age today with Zoom. And there might be somebody that might get elected on council, whether it's a councilperson or deputy or a mayor. And they say, well, I I got a beautiful place in Florida. I'm just going to operate for the six months uh in Florida. And uh, and and run my uh, my ju- my uh elected position from there. I, th- that could never happen, right?
Well, I think the safety net there would be as if it's at the discretion of the chair to participate electronically. A a good mayor or chair would say, knock your socks off, go down for a month, but s- six months is is not committed to the job. You know, really, if you want to be on council, there is a certain amount that that it does take being here, being after COVID, let's pretend, or, you know, being here, being physical, being present, meeting people, uh, checking out the road, checking out a planning file that you need to see on the ground. So it's not ever intended for people to take a extended holiday. If you're on holiday, you're on holiday, but if you are somewhere else and you're able to participate, whether that be in Florida at one or even two meetings, I I think that's going to be.
No, I I have no problem with somebody taking a holiday. I'd love to take one myself, but uh, I'm just talking about, you know, s- maybe somebody would say, well, I can do this. There's nothing in the bylaw that says I can't do it. And I'm going to sit in Florida and sit on my deck and uh, tha- that's the way it's going to be. I just hope that doesn't happen because I know as a constituent, I wouldn't want my ward counselor or my deputy mayor or my mayor uh, sitting in Florida, um, not taking care of all the, all the issues that we have to deal with as counselors. Counselors deal with different issues every day and sometimes they, people like to see your face too. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Tamara, did you want to add to that or?
No, I was just going to say the discretion of the chair again covers, I think you're fine.
Yes, but I do, you know, I do know there's, there's times it's, like I say, it's a crunch, a medical appointment, a something, a snowstorm, or even you want to go to Florida for a month. It, all of us on screen know, maybe the people at home don't know. It's, you just said, what's a holiday? I mean, I, I did a teeny bit of camping this year. That's it. Uh, between the meeting schedules at this, at the county, um, Board of Health, Library, all the things I'm on, it's, it's next to impossible. So I think it's a great option. I think it's a great option for the public who want to participate um by either watching or zooming in as a delegate, particularly in planning. Remember the tax sale we had? I think it was a hundred and sixty people were registered. So you couldn't possibly, we would have to rent a physical space to do that. So there's some things, some good things that will come out of COVID that forced us to uh to do this this way. Tamara?
I was just going to say even from the ongoing safety that we've learned from COVID, like if people now get a slight sniffle or a cold that they're worried is contagious, they don't have to feel like they have to bring it into the council chambers and share it. They can legitimately participate and easily.
You know, Walt, you had your uh, your knee done. You wouldn't, it would have been great that you were able to zoom in and attend a meeting. That would have almost been unfortunate if you couldn't have been able to come in here physically to, whether you weren't able to drive at that time. Oh, I have to miss a meeting because I had my knee operated on. So, you know, there's things like that. But is there anything else in the meeting times, dates? I think it's really great that the government finally realized that the inaugural uh meeting should be a little bit earlier. There was always, I've been on council three terms, well, four, sorry, this is my fourth. There was always that awkward meeting in November between the election and the term of council. And uh, I mean, you were, couldn't really get anything done anyway, so it it shortens the lame duck period and um gets the new council able to roll in and uh. So good work, Mallory. But you know what? Procedural bylaws are the one bylaw I noticed that the the six months it could change. Hopefully not, but sometimes there's, because it's such a fulsome bylaw with all the committees and everything else. So mover, second or to uh receive? Counselor Clark, Counselor Wood Roberts? We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges, received the proposed amendments to the bylaw two thousand and twenty-one dash fifty-three, being a bylaw to govern the calling place and proceedings of meetings. And further that the committee, the whole accepts the proposed amendments to the procedural bylaw as written. And further that the committee, the whole recommends that council, as per section twenty-one of the procedural bylaw, give official notice of the proposed amendments at the December twenty-first meeting of council. So that the bylaw may be brought forward for adoption in January of two thousand and twenty-two. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. And lastly, the draft insurance claim handling policy. We've been talking about this one for a while.
Yeah, so um there's, yeah, the draft policies included in the package. Um, as society becomes more litigious, there's kind of a need to protect the taxpayer money in the municipality as well. So just establishing a um, a set process for when we receive small claims is 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 a good idea moving forward. But a big thing too is is education because I get quite a few phone calls um from members of the public and we don't have information on our website um, who actually just don't know the rules. So they've been told by a friend that they should submit their claims to the municipality, but they don't understand the processes involved and obviously, and the legislation and stuff behind it. So they're looking to get information from from the office. And I think that um it's a good idea to provide on our website, most of, a large majority of um other municipalities do. So they know that someone's going to go onto their website and search claims or insurance or risk management or something like that. And they provide all the information on, you know, this is what happens if there's bodily injury, injury. This is what happens is there's a car accident and they just, you know, they they run it down quickly. And I think it will avoid some of the um conflict and stuff that that is being dealt with too, because it's very clearly laid out and 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 we have to abide by the municipal act. And there there are sections of the municipal act that that do protect protect municipalities so that ten years down the line, someone doesn't come, come to you and say, I had a car accident ten years ago and I'd like to claim it now, please. So there are, there are things like that in that act that protect us. So this is kind of laying it out and and the process. And and then as part of this new policy, we'll provide a whole webpage that just explains to people how it works as well, so that it's clear for the public. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Any questions, Mallory? Like I say, we've been talking about this for a while because I remember uh your predecessor Cheryl Coulson was working on this, uh, but, you know, COVID hit, so went to the back burner, but it's important. By the way, I did not slip and fall on municipal property. Same. Okay, uh mover, second or? Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and uh Counselor Donaldson? We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the draft insurance claim handling policy report. And further that the committee, the whole recommends that council approve the policy as written. And further direct that staff bring the policy to the December twenty-first meeting of council for approval. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. And I believe that is everything for. And I believe that is everything for today. Yeah, we'll just look to see if there's any notice of motion. Seeing none, just a reminder that we do have our first, uh, draft of the budget meeting coming up this Friday. I'm hoping I'm in attendance, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. And if I'm not, Deputy Mayor Kennedy can hardly wait to chair that meeting. Uh, uh, our treasurer Barbara Swinell has, uh, put herself in, uh, lockdown, treasurer's land lockdown. And she did tell me yesterday that she's hoping to have it out today, but if not, uh, tomorrow. So we will have an advance. Keep in mind, it's a first draft. And, uh, I'm sure there'll be lots of discuss- discussions, so, um, looking forward to that. And, uh, if nothing else, I will look for a mover in a second or to adjourn. Councillor Donaldson, councillor Clark? We resolved that the committee, the whole adjourn its meeting held on December seventh, twenty twenty-one at eleven forty-eight AM. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day, have a great afternoon. Take care.